And years past.
All right. All right, good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, August 5th, and this is our second straight week of a regular meeting, catching up on our recess. We've got a fairly short agenda, but I would encourage you, if you're here and you're done with your item, we've moved the Capstone Project presentations from our summer interns to the end of the meeting. I heard they're excellent. I would highly encourage you, if you either stay here and watch them, or to watch them online, they're always, they're always great to see what our interns did over the course of the summer. But before we get into our regular meeting, we are going to start as we always do with the invocation and the pledge. Our invocation today will be led by Pastor Andrew Heisler from First Baptist Church of Bradenton, and our pledge will be read by our newest deputy county administrator, Corey Stussy, who is a 10-year veteran of the Navy and worked in special ops in the Pacific. So, thank you for your service and welcome aboard. But we will start with our invocation. Please rise if you're able.
Lord, I thank you. Thank you for the day you have made. I thank you, Lord, for the breath in our lungs. I thank you, God, for the city leaders who are present in this meeting, for the hard decisions that they have to make. Lord, we thank you for those citizens who are in this room. For, Lord, you have given us each passions and convictions. We each, Lord, face challenges and have unique perspectives on things. Lord, I ask, just as it says in your word, that we are to seek wisdom and understanding, counsel and instruction in all matters of equity. For, Lord, we seek justice, we seek fairness, we seek compromise and understanding. For, Lord, you have gifted us a great place, a great city, and a great state, and in an amazing nation that, Lord, you lead and guide each day. And I pray, Lord, that you would bless those in this room as decisions are made, perspectives are heard, and, Lord, as we seek to lead this place to a better position. Bless us, Lord, in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I be seated? County Administrator, do we have any updates to the agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. All updates were published with the online agenda.
All right, thank you. And we will go promptly into awards and proclamations. We will start off with a presentation of our Team Member of the Month Award for August 2025. Who is going to be presenting this? Anybody?
Dan Thomas. Our Employee of the Month Team Member, Charles. Yep. Charles, come on up front.
That's Stephanie's department.
Yeah, but they're running IT ragged right now.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity today to recognize Charles Katab, Specialist on our Networking Team. Charles has been with us for 10 years, and he's exactly the kind of employee team member that we're looking for in IT. He is an Army reservist, he's a Master Sergeant, and with multiple deployments under his belt. He's a father, he's active in the community, he's a scout leader, but he brings to the work a mission orientation, a dedication, a drive to get things done, to focus on the customer and to get results for them. We can depend on him through storms and challenges and everything that comes up day to day. He's dedicated, he works hard, and he gets results for us. So, I appreciate the opportunity to recognize him this morning.
I guess, thank you. No, Mike said most of it. It's a great, great year so far. I get to retire this year out of the Army, so he gets me more. So, but this was, he hired me knowing this, so it was good. But no, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for everything you do. Thank you to your whole department. Yours is a phone. Every month that the Chair goes to do the Team Member of the Month, and usually we walk in while somebody's in the middle of something. This time, we walked in, we had to wait for some people, so we had, we conducted a whole meeting while he was sitting there. He didn't even realize we were there for Team Member of the Month, so.
It was a big surprise.
Thank you very much. We're now going to move forward with three proclamations. Before I send people down there, I'll entertain a motion to approve proclamations. I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Ballard. We'll do this verbally. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed. As approved unanimously, and we will start with National Health Center Week by Commissioner Bob McCann. With assistance by former County Commissioner Reggie Bellamy. Welcome, Reggie.
Thanks for being here, and thanks for all the work you do in the community. This proclamation, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas for over 46 years, MCR Health has provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary specialty and preventive health care to medically underserved communities, delivering value to and significantly impacting Manatee County healthcare system. And whereas MCR Health, a critical community healthcare partner, serves all populations regardless of their income or insurance status, and provides over 500,000 annual medical and behavioral health visits to over 100,000 patients in Manatee County and throughout its 26 locations. And whereas MCR Health works tirelessly to develop service delivery systems to meet the needs of the underserved through new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care to provide comprehensive care, allowing each community member it serves to thrive. And whereas MCR Health serves as a beacon of strength, service, and care, offering essential resources and support in the face of disasters and pandemics, and continues to respond quickly and provide care for Manatee County's most vulnerable and underserved communities. And whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate the legacy of Manatee County's only community health center and its vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of Manatee County's healthcare system. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, that August 3rd through 9th, 2025, shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Health Center Week in Manatee County, Florida. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this Tuesday, August 5th, Board of County Commissioners, signed by Chairman George Cruz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before I get into my drafted speech that I will have, I want to always take and tell you all, thank you for all the work that you do to make Manatee County what it is. We really sincerely appreciate it. On behalf of our MCR Health and MCR's Board of Directors, I want to sincerely thank the Manatee County Board of Commissioners for just generous recognition during National Healthcare Week. We are proud to be a part of the county's healthcare infrastructure and deeply grateful for your continued support and partnership. Again, thanks for all you do.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Yeah, Marty.
I want to thank you. This is Dr. Price. I am the President and CEO of MCR Health. And again, I want to thank you for your commitment to the healthcare and the well-being of the citizens of this community. Your support empowers us to see those 100,000 patients, regardless of their ability to pay, many of whom rely on us for their healthcare as their only source of healthcare in this community. Through collaborations between the local government and with community health centers, we're able to reach and take care of the patients that we serve in this county at an optimal level with high-quality care. Once again, thank you for recognizing the role that community health centers serve in the community and what MCR can do in collaboration with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you both, and it's always good to see both of you. Commissioner Bellamy, you need to come by more often. Next proclamation is Overdose Awareness Month by Commissioner Ballard.
Whereas August 31st, International Overdose Awareness Day is the world's largest annual campaign to end overdoses. Remember, without stigma, those who have died and acknowledge the grief of the family members and the friends left behind. And whereas, the 2025 theme for International Overdose Awareness Day, "One Big Family to Take Action on Overdose", emphasizes community connection, compassion, shared responsibility in preventing overdose deaths, and supporting recovery efforts worldwide. And whereas, as of July 15th, 2025, Manatee County has recorded over 350 overdose events year-to-date, following over 850 in 2024 and over 1,200 in 2023, reflecting progress but underscoring the continued need for action and support. And whereas, the Board recognizes that behind each statistic is a person, someone's child, parent, sibling, or friend, and that the stigma surrounding substance use disorder prevents many from seeking help and receiving compassionate care. And whereas, in recognition of the ongoing public health crisis and the urgent need for awareness, prevention, and recovery, Manatee County strengthens its commitment by designating August as Overdose Awareness Month, complementing the observance of International Overdose Awareness Day. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, that August 2025 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Overdose Awareness Month in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, and signed by our Chair, George Cruz. And we would also be remiss if we didn't thank the state for their support with, through the core program for overdose prevention.
So, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Steve Toms, and I serve as a community health educator with the Manatee County Overdose Prevention and Education Program. On behalf of our program, I want to sincerely thank you for this proclamation, recognizing August 31st as International Overdose Awareness Day, and designating August as Overdose Awareness Month here in Manatee County. The Manatee County Overdose Prevention and Education Program, or OPEP, is a SAMSA-funded grant initiative under Health Services dedicated to reducing opioid-related overdoses in our community. Through a compassionate, education-focused approach, OPEP provides three no-cost services: free naloxone or Narcan distribution, opioid overdose and naloxone education and training sessions, and peer support in partnership with NAMI. These services are accessible to anyone by visiting mymanatee.org and searching "OPEP". This proclamation is more than a symbolic gesture. It is a strong, public affirmation that our community values the lives of those we have lost, supports those still struggling, and is committed to taking collective action. Your leadership helps reduce stigma, foster compassion, and reinforce the message that substance use disorder is a health condition, not a moral failing, and that recovery is always possible. Throughout the month of August, we will launch a poster and social media video campaign titled "End the Stigma, Save Lives. Every Story Matters, Every Voice Counts". This campaign will share the voices of local leaders, first responders, healthcare professionals, peer support workers, and individuals with lived experience, both those in recovery and those who have lost loved ones. Our campaign is grounded in the belief that everyone deserves dignity, families deserve support, and no one should suffer in silence. Each story shared brings us closer to a more compassionate, connected, and resilient Manatee County. Thank you once again to the Board of County Commissioners for your continued support. Your recognition today helps lift the voices of those often unheard and reminds us all that together, as one big family, we can take action on overdose.
Thank you very much. And our last proclamation for today will be by Commissioner Felts, and it is Women's Equality Day.
I'm very thankful for being asked to present this proclamation. I think one of the unique things about Manatee County is how instrumental women were in our history here. I believe that we've documented in the briefing on this that when women were given the right to vote, the first person to register to vote was the daughter of the supervisor of elections. We have many women in Manatee County who were working against the odds, against the challenges of the day. In Sarasota, you had Bertha Palmer. You've all heard of Palmer Boulevard, Honoré. This was a very instrumental woman who created her own cattle ranches back then, when that certainly wasn't a thing that women were expected to do. As the second-oldest Commissioner, except for Bob, one of the things that's a joy about being blessed to live another day is that you are part of history. If you look back on this wall over here, you'll notice we had quite some prominent female Commissioners take their pictures off the wall, because if it wasn't for this, they wouldn't be there. I wouldn't be here. Many of you are too young to remember when women were not allowed to have a credit card unless they were married. Boy, we sure got that one down, don't we? But it's, it's, it's really, you don't realize what those changes were until you were one of those people that came from that era. And that was an era that we have a chance to be proud in, and we have a chance to say today that we appreciate that there is an equality, not just for women, but for everyone, that everyone has an opportunity to exceed, everybody has the opportunity to pursue a life of happiness, and women are just part of that. So, to read the proclamation, ladies. Whereas August 26th marks the anniversary of the certification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, which affirmed the right of women to vote and represents a historic milestone in the advancement of civic equality. And whereas, Women's Equality Day provides an opportunity to recognize the individuals who contributed to expanding our rights and to reflect on the importance of equal participation in all aspects of public and private life. And whereas, women today continue to encounter challenges related to economic opportunity, leadership representation, access to healthcare, and personal safety, underscoring the value of continued attention to equitable treatment. And whereas, it is important for public institutions to uphold the principles of equal opportunity for all residents and to support civic engagement across all communities. And whereas, Manatee County affirms its commitment to fostering a respectful community where all individuals have the opportunity to thrive. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that Tuesday, August 26th, 2025, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Women's Equality Day in Manatee County. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ruth Herenshaw, and I'm the President of the League of Woman Voters of Manatee County, and I am also accompanied here by Michelle from the Women's Resource Center that is partnering with us, along with other organizations, in the month of August in recognition of Women's Equality Day. I want to thank Commissioner Felts. Thank you, Chairman Cruz. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Administrator Bishop. Much has changed, as Commissioner Felts has said. Much has been achieved in civic equality since Bertha Curry was the first woman registered to vote in Manatee County over 100 years ago. Commissioner Felts, Commissioner Ballard, County Attorney D'Agostino, are three testaments in this room of what has been achieved. So, we celebrate these accomplishments, these changes. We have indeed come a long way from the days when women were excluded from paid work and politics. But there is data that says there is work still to be done. The persistent pay gap. Working women head of households who live below the poverty line. Child brides married this year in 34 states, including Florida. Those are three testaments showing we still have a way to go before achieving equality. So, the League of Woman Voters of Manatee County and the Women's Resource Center accept with gratitude, with gratitude, this proclamation for Women's Equality Day 2025, and will continue the work to fully achieve equality. Thank you so much.
All right, and we are done with our proclamations. Moving on to the regular agenda, starting with the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items you wish to pull from consent? Hearing none. I will open up citizen comments on consent agenda items. That's items 6 through 27 on the agenda. I have one person signed up, but I, nope. You're signed up, but Glenn's faster, so you're next.
For the record, Glenn Jabalina. So, just, just a couple of things. I don't have a problem with the consent agenda. I do, in the past, on your code enforcement fines, in item 23 and 24, you used to give a lot more information than what is currently, I see there today. You just put the case number. It's difficult to find. I went to the clerk, I couldn't find that case number. So, in the past, you had, not only you had the property appraiser's ID number, which is one way to look it up, but you also had commonly known address as. None of those two components are in this. So, what I like to do is just kind of zoom in, see what the property looks like. You know, it took this one guy four years to move a trailer. Maybe he did, maybe he didn't. But without pictures and information that you used to do in the past, I think it just, it just, I just think you can add more information. That's all I'm saying. And the other thing I want to approve and approve of is the trolley, right? We want the trolley to continue, because I can tell you, they work. One year ago today, I was in One year ago today, I was in Deadwood for the Sturgis rally, and I rode a trolley. I love riding trolleys. So, they work. It's only a two-year extension, and it's a revenue-generating source, so I should be back in Sturgis instead of freezing. Amen. Thank you.
All right. Betty, you're up. You were the only one who signed up. Glenn just hijacked your first spot.
I tried to sign up as well.
Just for you.
Okay. Thank you. It's been a long time.
It has been a long time.
Yes, it has. Okay. My name is Betty Sales Rose. I'm here for the character that y'all have, and I'm for it.
That's an actual agenda item. That's not consent.
Oh, did I say... Okay, then. I'll go back.
Item number 32 is a very short agenda, so it'll happen this morning, but it's not now.
Okay. I'll go back.
All right.
Perfect. Things have just been going so well in District 2 that Ms. Betty hasn't had a reason to come up.
All right. Are there any other public comments for consent agenda items only? Seeing none, and there's no hands raised on the phone, I will close public comment on consent agenda items, and I will entertain motions from this board for approval of consent.
So moved.
I have a mo... I gave you the tie last time, so...
Give it to Ron. Give it to Ron.
Motion is made by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Sadiq to approve consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, is approved unanimously. Now, I'm moving on to citizen comments for future agenda items. It's not up yet to see if anyone's signed up. We did not all abstain. There you go. No. We all abstained.
All abstained, no consent.
I have nobody sign up for future agenda, so Glenn, if you want to come up.
Way to make an assumption.
Yeah, just a lucky guess.
For the record, Glenn Giblina. So, there's a new ordinance that came by, not in my backyard. It's absolutely a great leap forward in providing housing from our religious institutions. I think it's important that, you know, perhaps the county should reach out. As you know, I go to 26 different churches every year, so I have felt these things out. I've talked to pastors. They can't navigate the complex process of permitting and construction loans and all that, or whether the zoning can even allow it. This allows them to move forward in that direction. And I think if the county would say, you know what, I think it's time to send a message out there that we're here to help you. If you want to put housing on your church property, we're going to walk you through that process. So, I think that needs to be done. The other thing is form-based code. You know, rather than tabling that, we should move forward on that, because you could do that like a special district tell. I mean, you could say, look, we want form-based code from this parameter to that parameter, and do it like Woodfield Estates and other areas, so we can move forward in that direction. You just have to have a geographical move on that, but that's what we need to do. The OEPF settlement, you know, I did a records request on how much money was spent, where it was. I have 14 pages of expenditures. I see a lot of salaries, I see a lot of phone bills. So, we're going to do a deep dive into this and see what's happening.
Don't break my microphone.
And the last thing I want to say, talk about a later...
I was just hearing this.
Is Senate Bill 180. I'm going to be going down to Mr. Boyd's office here in a few minutes and dropping his copy off, but this needs to move forward. We need to send a message to Tallahassee and our elected officials that cutting the legs off from under you from the job that we elected you to do is unacceptable. I know there's a couple other counties in there we need to move forward with, so I strongly encourage that, to join with these other counties, because this is an absolute travesty, what Tallahassee did to you. For the record, Glenn Gadfly Giblina. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on future agenda items, items that do not appear on today's agenda? I do not see Zoom. Does anybody have their hand up? Oh, they do not. Okay. Wow, that is on record. All right, I will close public comment on future agenda. I got myself and Commissioner Ron on the board. To be real quick, Glenn, they're both related to you, since you're the only one who spoke. The church thing, someone's already looking at that in Manatee County. That said, if a church... No church is actually building their own housing. That's, I mean, you know, building housing is not easy. They're going to partner with people if they're going to use that Yigby language, theest in God's backyard that was added to a local this year. If they can't figure out how to navigate our permitting process, they can't figure out how to build an apartment complex. My understanding is, from conversations with people at the state and some people here locally, some people are looking at it, but it's all going to be through partnerships. It's going to be through ground leases, things like that. It's not going to be a church going out, using their summer camp to build an apartment. So, we're always here to help. I mean, our development services team is very accommodating if people have questions about how to use Excel and things like that. So, we're no more or nor less accommodating relative to that particular language, and we'll continue to do so, but we do expect some people to take advantage of that language in the near future. Second comment was Senate Bill 180. You saw my Substack about that, my opinion on it. You'll also see later this week, it's on the hearing list, so it's public now, but later this week, it'll be noticed. August 21st, we had a placeholder date for a meeting. We're having a two-item meeting on August 21st to finalize the approval of putting the wetlands back and finalize the rescission of Policy 2128. That is going to be happening this month. So, we are moving forward in spite of language, because I don't believe that language is pertinent to those two particular items. So, we're doing weekend as a county to make sure that the people who voted us in up here on this board are getting what they asked for when they voted us in in the first place. We are looking at other avenues, including one that was brought up by Commissioner McCann last week. I talked to the county attorney, she's looking at options on that as well on a broader scale, but relative to the hyper-local stuff with items, we are moving those forward. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to piggyback on what you were discussing with the churches. It's glad to see this. It's long needed. We have a church here, Oasis Church, that was trying to build a group home for aging-out-of-foster-care children, and it was a nightmare to get that thing done. So, I'm so glad to see this, and thanks for bringing that information forward, Glenn. It's so important that these faith-based organizations have the ability, if they want to provide housing for their members or whatever, that they can do it. So, thanks for bringing it forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It hates me. Okay, thank you. I did want to say, we do actually have, I believe that Bayview has a request in for dormitories, which is a type of our housing over there. As you mentioned Oasis, I remember when they were doing that. Also, in Tampa, churches are getting involved in establishing elder care facilities. So, I think it's very important, and that's pretty much what we could count on our faith-based people to do, and to make that process a lot simpler for them and encourage them to do that, I think, is the right thing to do. And once again, definitely behind, of course, anything that we could do to maintain our local rule.
Thank you. And we are done with comments on future agenda. We had nothing pulled from consent. We are already on regular agenda at 9:33. Look at that. I'm doing my best. Item number 28.
Hold on. I think we have a... I thought we had a call in.
But that person called that I already closed public comment. We're gonna... I reopen call...
Sorry.
I reopen public comment after, which is in like an hour.
Yeah, sure. Call back later.
Yeah. Item number 28, it's CBB. It's the appointment of four hoteliers to the Tourist Development Council. This should be easy, because we only have four applicants. So, unless somebody has a fundamental problem with one of these three, county attorney, can we just approve them en masse? They're all reappointments.
Yeah. If there's four vacancies and four applicants, the board can in one vote approve the slate that's offered for appointment.
All right. Well, before I do that, I'll open it up to public comment on the appointment to the TDC board. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. Nobody's on the board. I will accept a motion just to approve the reappointment of all four of these members.
So moved.
Do you want to reappoint said members?
Commissioner, is a motion approved by Commissioner McCann, because he was more efficient in his motion.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ballard, the chair of the TDC. All in favor, please vote. It's on the board. Jason. You got... Oh, there it goes. All right. And as approved, 7-2-0. Welcome back to the TDC board, to all four of you. Keep up the good work. Moving on to item number 29, authorize updates to the federal government's official system for contracting and federal assistance. Michelle, you're up.
Hi. Michelle Davis, government... Sorry. Grant Division Manager for Manatee County, and thank you, Commissioners. The first item, we... Every year, CM.gov has to be re-updated with our registration as an entity to be able to go for grant, which is the financial assistance, and/or in the case of our 9,000 building, to be able to lease defima for that contract. And so, notice that there was not a resolution out there for that, so wanted to just put this in front of the board to be able to have... It would basically go through our county administrator and to he... His designee to be able to register that, so it's formalized within our system.
All right. Are there any questions on this item? Now, I will open it up to public comments. Seeing none, I will close public comment. No one's on the board. I will entertain motions to authorize this update.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ballard. Seconded by Commissioner Sadiq. As approved, 7-2-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you the next one as well?
Thirty, yes.
All right. Item number 30, execution of the CDBGDR Action Plan Grant Agreement.
Yes, I want to do a woo-hoo, because we are at that point where we do have the action plan approved by HUD, and we have the grant agreement. So, we have, once this is executed by you and then by them, we will be able to go into our next stage where we're putting the manuals together, and then implementation comes after those manuals.
I am incredibly impressed with how efficient this was. You guys fell over yourself getting this done. This is a tight timeline, there's a lot of moving parts, there are a lot of hands in the cookie jar trying to figure this out with municipalities and organizations. I'm very happy with how we handle this and how you and your team handle it. So, thank you very much for moving this forward. A quarter billion dollars is not something to fall down on. So, thank you. Commissioner Ballard.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your efficiency. I know it had to be a very heavy lift to meet the timelines, but you've done an amazing job, so thank you.
Thank you.
I will open this up to public comment. Any public comment on the execution of this agreement? Seeing none, I will close public comment. No one's on the board. I will entertain motions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sadiq.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Ballard. You can cast your votes when it comes up. There it goes. And that is also approved, 7-2-0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And item number 31, presentation and acceptance of the Manatee County Vulnerability Assessment. Who is that?
Sherri Swanson, Manatee County Natural Resources Department, Ecological and Marine Resources Division Manager. This is going to be brief, and maybe even more brief, because my consultant didn't realize this would be up so soon, so they're five minutes out, so they may or may not be joining me.
If you need the consultant to make for a better presentation, I can move the curfew ordinance and the other item first and then bring you back. It's super early. I have no problem moving those up and deferring years till after those, if you'd rather wait for the consultant. It's your call.
That would be great.
Okay.
They're a little better prepared for their slides.
That's fine. I think more people are here for the curfew thing anyway, so we'll bang that out. That seems like the one that had the most comments.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, we are going to hold off on item number 31 and quickly, well, maybe not quickly, but go through the Commissioner agenda items. Item number 32, this is Commissioner McCann, Manatee County Juvenile Curfew Ordinance. You're up.
Yes, we have, you know, a request and people to talk about a curfew ordinance here in Manatee County. I think it's a good idea. I will be in support of it. I have a motion today, but, you know, again, the curfew is something that we need to look at here, to not only protect our children, but to reduce crime and to make sure that, you know, they have a chance to succeed in school and in life. So, I appreciate the fact that we're bringing this up today. Omar was very instrumental in this. So, again, I would like to, you know, just let you open it to comment.
So, I've been discussing this with members of the community for several months. My understanding is that the sheriff's office wanted to see this come forward, the school district would like to see this come forward, and I've heard from several of my constituents who would like to see this come forward. People in my district have probably been most affected by crimes committed by juveniles in those late hours. We have a whole lot of car break-ins. That's really the biggest thing, people, teens getting into cars, stealing cars, stealing guns. And then unfortunately, we see violence that occurs after the kids steal those guns. So, I understand that it is, you know, it is a restriction. It should be narrowly tailored. I think absolutely there should be exceptions for teens that are... That have permission to be out, teens that have jobs, teens that have, you know, legitimate reasons to be out at night. There are provisions for that within the state statute, and I think that our local ordinance should be tailored as closely as possible to that state statute, so that we have all of those exceptions in place for the teens that...
Yes. Yes. This is just in response to what you just said. We're going to tailor it directly to the state statute, because that's exactly what we need to do. And the problem is becoming county-wide now. So, you know, I mean, even over in Lakewood Ranch, we're having car break-ins, and, you know, we're having a lot of people out on the street at night, and we want to curb this in the county specifically.
Thank you very much. And so, I will be in support of this, and I'm glad to hear that it will align with the state statute and that we'll have... That it will be narrowly tailored and that we'll have those exceptions for teens that have legitimate reasons to be out at night, so that we're not creating too much of a restriction on kids that have responsibilities or a need to be out.
I've been in support of this as well. My understanding with, speaking with the attorneys, that there are certain components of the sample ordinance where the language needs to be tweaked a little bit. For example, there are mentions of curfew centers where minors could be dropped off. I'm not aware of any or what that might mean, but I think the intention is to essentially bring this forward to have an attorney review and try to rewrite.
That was just taken as an example in there that has nothing to do with what's going to be proposed today. We're going specifically out of the state statute.
Sounds good. Perfect. So, I certainly would love to support this, again, narrowly tailoring this to address some of the challenges we're seeing throughout the county. I've lived in a lot of cities where the governing bodies, just like teenagers run amok, and then you get ATV gangs running down the National Mall in DC, for example, or plenty of other places, I've seen this happen. So, I'd be happy to support this, and I'd love to see more community feedback, to see what the public has to say about what are the components of the state statute and some of the model language presented today you'd like to see enforced, what might not work, might not be... Might hurt parents more that are, you know, might have kids out for a certain reason. Just try to find the right balance of the language. So, I'd be open to hearing what the public has to say about that, to make sure we don't get good kids in trouble and make sure we can account for a little bit of flexibility here as well. Thank you.
I appreciate that we've all shared that this is not an issue that I think any... I appreciate that we've all shared that this is not an issue that I think any district is immune to. With the growth in parish, we've also experienced a lot of car break-ins. Because of the location, you get easy access off of, into, off of I-75. And so, no, no one is immune. There's other incidences that are a cause of, and like I said, no one is immune. And we all know the expression, "It takes a village." What breaks my heart is the youngsters that killed, get killed on our highways that are not safe to be on for their age. And late at night, we've dealt with a lot of that out in East County. I would have some concerns over our sheriff's enforcement plan for this to make sure that we have the kind of support that our sheriff needs to enforce these ordinances. And a lot of, the other aspect of it is, you know, we hear every day about runaways or missing people. And we may also find that some of those kids that are out there are homeless. So, I think this gives us an opportunity to take a little bit more of a proactive approach and to be that village. And if we have parenting issues, if we have scheduling issues, things like that, I think if we look at this as a countywide effort to help curb crime, to help our children grow up safely, I think it's a very good thing to do. Thank you.
All right. I put myself on the board just so we can have a little different discussion. I am fundamentally against those. I'm voting no on it. It's not going to do anything. All we're doing is setting more rules to people. Like, the first penalty is a written warning. The second one's fifty bucks. Know who doesn't care about written warnings? People who are out after hours to commit crimes. Like, we have this conversation about guns. We have this conversation about everything that the people who don't listen to laws are people who are about to go out and break laws. You know, this is going to go after innocent kids that are just out later for innocent reasons. Like, my daughter's sixteen. She's a great kid. She's never caused a single second of problem in my life. But the state says she can't drive after eleven PM because that's the rule when you're sixteen years old. She's been at her friend's house at eleven fifty-five, literally texting us worried, like, how am I supposed to get home? Because she's scared that at eleven oh-one, she's going to get pulled over by the police, which is not the best use of the police's time, to check her ID to see if whether or not she's one minute after curfew and get worried. And she's stressed about it. But she's a good kid. She's not driving around to go drag racing. You're going after the good kids, not the bad kids. We talked last time when this came up about the bathrooms here in City of Bradenton. Guess who has a curfew? City of Bradenton. It doesn't protect the kids who are going to cause the problem. It doesn't protect us from the kids who are going to cause the problems. It protects the kid who maybe has to go to work after, after high school. It doesn't get home from work until ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night because on the track team. Wants to go out and run around his neighborhood, get some exercise before going to sleep. It protects the kid who's walking down. My, my in-laws live a half mile from our house down the road. My kids have walked over there super late at night in the past. Technically, this curfew says that's illegal for them to do so. And they can be fined for walking to their grandparents' house because there's nothing in the laundry list of exceptions that allow to walk to grandma's house. Like, I just think this is a, this is a solution looking for a problem. I think the problem is the kids that are committing crimes. I think we have MSO and we will fund the MSO to protect us from the kids committing crimes. I think layering one more set of regulation rule on top of kids solely based on age and then having our MSO, who already comes in and says they're short-staffed, go around and look for kids that may look a little young and then ask for IDs to prove whether they're sixteen or seventeen, if it's after eleven o'clock, or seventeen or eighteen, if it's after twelve o'clock, is just more burden for our police who should be out looking for the kids actually committing crime. And I don't care if those kids are fourteen years old, eighteen years old, or forty years old. That's who the police should be focusing on, not some innocent kid who happens to be hanging out, watching a movie too late at her friend's house and coming home. And if they're driving in District One and getting accidents, there's already laws that are statewide that we didn't implement that restrict the kids from driving after hours anyway. So, that takes care of itself at the state level. So, I am against this completely. No one else on the board? You're, no, not on the board. Not, well, now you are. Put yourself on after I said that. Commissioner Phelps.
I appreciate Commissioner Cruz's utopian aspects of the world. And I was a good kid, too. If I remember correctly. It's a long time ago. The problem here is, I understand the viewpoint. Gosh, more government. You know, gosh, our, 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 our law enforcement is strained. Gosh, we didn't give them enough money this year. So, how are they going to do this? You know, if it saves one kid from being, if it saves a homeless kid, that maybe that's why he's out there. If it saves one kid from being smashed like a dead hog on our roads out there, I'm with it. If it, and more than anything else, where it hits me is that you asked for this. You came to us and you asked us for help in your area. And our first allegiance to me isn't to infringing on a minor's rights. I'd like for that minor to live, to be an adult and learn to exercise those rights. And unfortunately, we do have, I don't, again, we do have an issue with our youth in that very few are employed because there's a forty-year-old at the counter of McDonald's. Not, not a fifteen-year-old like I was. And, and I would never want to make things burdensome for law enforcement or infringe on any rights. But when a community comes to me and they ask me for help, you got to, who do we serve? Who do we serve up here? It comes down to you. And I feel the same. Most of our crimes in parish, it really goes more to personal responsibility. It's people who leave their cars unlocked. It's people who leave guns in their glove compartments unlocked. It's people who are coming into parish from Hillsborough County and from Pinellas County. In roving bands of youth, yes, that is a problem we're having. And again, in Maiaque, yeah, we've got people that run the roads late at night and we're trying to save their lives. I don't want to see another memorial for two teenagers that probably shouldn't have been. There's a reason why. And maybe I wouldn't want to see Commissioner Cruz's daughter run into by some other crazy sixteen-year-old that is driving a giant monster truck and mommy and daddy don't know where they're at. So, it's protecting her, too. So, we all have a community cause with this. We know we may have some challenges, but this is what you asked for. This is what you said you needed. This is the tool that we have the obligation to give to you and give to all of us so our children could grow up to be adults.
Thank you. And I will point out, I know you sit there for a chuckle, that I have a utopian view, but the fact that you believe a written warning is going to prevent quote-unquote roving bands of youths from stealing guns from cars is about as utopian as my comments. Commissioner McCann.
Being the elder statesman on the commission, as pointed out by Carol Phelps, I will tell you that I grew up and we had a curfew. Our curfew was much more restrictive than the Florida statutes are. The importance of this is not just the protection. The importance of this is the community education. This is telling the people that we are not going to allow you to be out at eleven PM. Nothing good happens after eleven PM anyway, till five AM on weekdays. Twelve oh-one AM to six AM on weekends, Friday and Saturday. Anybody that needs to be out after midnight should be working. The thing is that, you know, in this statute here, there's a very important communication here to, you know, the people that are out there committing the crimes, the people that are out there doing this. It says we're watching. A warning, again, many people got warnings. You know, some people heed them, some people don't. Some people, when they get that warning, get scared straight. Some people that get the warning, they disregard it. That's when the penalties start. This will not only help, you know, the youth, it'll help the parents also because there's many times now, you know, again, there's good kids out there, there's bad kids out there. I was always the good kid. Exactly. But again, the thing is that, you know, the bad kids that are out there may not heed a warning, but this gives their parents a little bit of background where they can say, you know, someone else is going to take this out of our hands if you act up. So, this is something I think that is educational as well as protective of the youth. And it gives the parents a little stronger rights, too, because now they're aware of what their kids are doing. And if they're not, the police will make them aware. When I was ready to go to bed in Chicago as a kid, they'd come on the news and say, and this was every channel. They'd say, "Do you know where your children are?" It is curfew. Okay? And, you know, at that time, a forgetful parent would say, "I better find my kid." So, again, this is something that the community is asking for. You know, when I make the motion, you'll see that we're incorporating a lot of things into this so that, you know, there will be protections. And again, the thing is that, you know, children don't need to be out driving or anything else after eleven PM at night unless they're working. And there are exceptions in the law to what they can do. So, you know, I appreciate your time. I look forward to your comments.
All right. There's nobody else on the board, so I will open this up to public comment before I all jump up. I got four people signed up, so we'll go in order. We're starting with Reginald McNeil. And that is followed by Jerry Parrish, then Dexter McDonald, then Omar Edwards.
Well, I don't know how to start with this. I, oh, yeah, I'm Reginald McNeil. I'm sorry. Assistant Principal at Braden Bay High School. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having us up here. And as I sit and listen to certain comments, specifically Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz, I have five daughters and not one of them is going to be outside the house at eleven. Raised them all, got two more left, freshmen and sophomore. No, like you, my daughters won't do anything wrong. But with this being implemented, I can honestly say that I know my daughter would be safe. See, if she is coming from a movie, that somebody won't jack her on the way home. Curfew will work for that, sir. Second mile, Braden Bay High School, that's why we came to this county. I think the state arrests somewhere around, what? Twenty-two percent? But Manatee County's twenty-five. You guys sit there, you should want to reduce that number. With the curfew implemented, it will help. And as you sit there and say with a nice, beautiful smile and shade and you laugh about a written warning, it's more than just a written piece of paper warning, sir. It's accountability for the parents as well. You start talking to them parents and you making them go in the courthouse for a violation of their scholar or child, I'm sorry, that's out. The road to get out there. The streets would be safer from that time. Who should be out there during the week after eleven o'clock? Got another hour on the weekend, she can watch a movie then, when she should be. But that's why we came here, Braden Bay High School. They give those scholars second chance. That does have issues with the law. But with this curfew, I think that we can prevent that more so than ever. I appreciate you guys' time. I hope that we do get this law passed because as much as it hurts for me to say this is that the young kids of my color, just like me, I don't like it because it's hurting us as a people and it affects you. Thank you for my time and, you know, I hope you find it in your heart, Mr. Cruz, to help pass this law. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Parrish.
My name's Jerry Parrish. I've been in the streets here for twenty years. And for fourteen, I did midnight to four, four nights a week. I've buried more kids. I've buried more black kids, brown kids, and Hispanic kids. White kids kill white kids. Brown kids kill brown kids. Black kids kill black kids. That's who they hang around with. Midnight to four is not a good time. In Onico, in Palmetto, Sammaset, Lakewood Ranch. I just spent four days at a house a boy beat his mother in Lakewood Ranch. He stole his daddy's car. I was there. The cops were there. Did the boy go to jail? No. Mama didn't want to file charges. They live in a six thousand square foot home. It doesn't matter the community. Wage is sin, it's death, and somebody, somebody else's sin is going to cause your child's death. This is simple math. We have got to put a curfew. It'll save some lives. And I'm so, and Mr. Cruz, I'm going to tell you something. I'm so glad, and this is not a, I'm glad that you've raised your child in a safe place and a great place. That is a commission to you and your wife. It's not, it's good. And I tried to do the same thing. My daughter got caught up in drugs. She's thirty-seven. She's about to get married. And so, my job here is real simple, to save kids' lives. I've buried more kids than I want to. And I'm a, I'm a, I'm a guy that just loves Jesus and cares for God and wants to do what's right. But this curfew is going to help me and help these guys and help the churches that are doing the work in the streets. And I want to honor you guys and thank you for even putting this up because we need it. And it's going to help. And so, and I'm asking the churches to do their parts, too. We have four hundred churches in Manatee County. Before COVID, we had thirty-eight churches in the streets doing adoptive blocks. You know how many we have now? Six. I don't know if they need to believe what they're preaching. It's time for us to get out of the four walls of church, get in the streets and care for those that need cared for. Thank you, guys, and thank you for getting this done.
Thank you. Dexter McDonald.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Pastor Dexter McDonald, pastor of Community Outreach Church. I'm a lifelong member here in Manatee County, president of the Ministers of Justice, which was established over ten years ago with the community pastors, community leaders, people from the community, Braden Police Department, Manatee County Sheriff Department, and the Thirteenth Avenue Dream Center. Our mission statement to collaboratively serve as a primary resource and catalyst to help families and youth, to promote education, mentoring, decrease crime, and facilitate social justice within our community. I have served this community for over thirty-five years, collaborating with many organizations. We developed a mentoring program in Manatee County School System. The program was so successful in transforming the lives of young men that Manatee County School System offered it throughout the county. As I stand before you today and as we talk about the need for ordinance, the Ministers of Justice also, we saw a need to become more involved in educating and helping our families. We established a parent university that enabled our parents to identify the learning styles of their children, that they may be equipped to help their child to excel and. that they may be equipped to help their child to excel and reach their goals. As I forestate, as I stand before you and I was listening to all the comments, my sister-in-law, she's a pastor here in Manatee County. Her daughter was out driving, 17-years-old, on 27th Street after 11 o'clock. They were out joyriding. They approached 26th Avenue and a car appeared out of nowhere. Knocked their car over into Mixon Grove. My niece was ejected from the car and died as a result of a reckless driver driving. And if there had been an ordinance in place, maybe she would be alive today. And maybe she would not have been driving after 11 o'clock. So I plead with you that you work along with us and collaborate with us as we reference the curfew law, 877.2, that we may save the lives of our young people within our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar. And Omar's the last person who officially signed up, so if anyone else was going to come up, then it's first come, first served. After that, after everyone in the chambers has spoken, I see that there are two hands up on the phone. I'll get to you after the public speaking up here. Go ahead, sir.
Commissioners, I'm glad to be here today. Omar Edwards, Associate Director, Strategic Planning Initiatives for the School District of Manatee County, but also a product of the School District of Manatee County. And I'm speaking on behalf of 52 years of experience because I've lived in Manatee County for 52 years. And I've watched when a crime happens that we react. We rarely be proactive. And this ordinance is an opportunity for us to get the cart before the horse this time and do what's right. Nothing good happens after midnight. We clearly understand that. Our mission of the School District is to educate and develop our students for their success today, for tomorrow. We want to make sure that our students get a good night's rest so that they can be on track to graduate. When we look at our graduation rate and our dropout rate and our school grades, we need students to be present, not sleepy, in school. We need them to not only come to school, but be there every day, ready to learn and ready to serve. This ordinance is a no-brainer. It will work. But laws and statutes are not written for the people that don't break them. All the statutes we have is based on a reason that it needs to be. And I don't know that we have the luxury of choosing whether we implement a state statute. They felt it was important then, and it is important now. But what it needs is an ordinance to go with it. And we have representation today from Manatee County Sheriff Department. We have Braden and Police Department here today. We even have Palmetto here today that are prepared to watch what we do here today and make sure that we implement it together. Is it a perfect solution? Absolutely not. Would it be work that needs to be done? But we brought it forward and we will carry it all the way with you. We will help you, give you recommendation. It's not a gotcha for kids. But what it is, is an opportunity for us to bond with them. I would love their input. Yes, it's a warning simply because we don't want a gotcha. We don't want to hurt them for the rest of their life. So we want to work with the School District to carefully roll this out the right way and communicate with families. And it will help those families that don't have control at home. I had a curfew. And the reason that I stand before you today as the Associate Director of Strategic Planning Initiatives, 27 years in the School District of Manatee County. That's why I'm here. Do the right thing. Help the people in Manatee County. Thank you.
All right, there's no one else on the board. Betty, you coming up? I'll give you an opportunity so Glenn doesn't jump in front of you.
Okay, my name again is Betty Sales Road. I am for the ordinance, you know, for the kid to be safe and everything. But the only problem I have with it is this. Now, we have kids, and my family's athlete, and we have kids that play football, basketball, run track and everything. And if my great-grandson come back in off a trip and he have to come in and somebody see him walking to the house and everything, I don't think he need to be stopped because it's school activity. So I'm for it because it will save a life, but I was just hearing some things up here being said. You know, a kid can be out driving at 17-years of age. You could be out driving at 50-years of age if something happened. We can't say that it can't happen, but I understand what the pastor was saying. His niece was ejected and died at the scene. Joyriding. A lot of us did that back during them days. A lot of us. I did it. But you never know when accident would happen. And like if my grandson driving, you know, like he say, his daughter, maybe a minute, I'm going to tell you, Cruz, your daughter would not be stopped, but my grandson going to be stopped by the cop because of the color of his skin. You understand? She not going to be stopped. Mine will be stopped if they see a young person driving. But I am for it. I go along with what Mr. Edwards is saying about we need it because we need our kids to graduate. We need our kids to go on to college. We need it. But some things can be enforced. And we, as parents, should be held accountable for our kids. Now, I know I would not have a kid out 13-years, 12 or 10 after 12 o'clock unless he with me out eating or something. So we, as parents, got to be held accountable for our kids. That our industries, they getting in trouble. That's where we started at the parent's house. They got to be held accountable for. You know, it's just so much, and like I say, I hate because it is over in my district, them young kids are buck wild over in Palmetto. And yes, P-Town going to be represented at all times over here. I know the sergeant here and everything, but I'm just saying. Sometimes we got to go along with what people are saying and everything, but I'm for it. But we got, after we going along with, hey, I had girls too. And listen here, if they had gone to a prom or they going somewhere with their friends, I don't care if they 17, they going. Because I'm going to trust them. That's what we here for. We have to trust our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment here in the room? Go ahead.
Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
This is my first time doing this. Hi, my name is Betsy Heroes. I stand here as an advocate for child trafficking, sex trafficking survivors, victims and survivors. I currently am an advocate or an ambassador for Safe House Project. I've been a housemother at Wellhouse, the Child Division. I've sat with survivors, child survivors, and heard their stories. I am in favor of the curfew law, 877.2. And it's not so much to protect those from having their cars broken into as much as it is to protect our children. There's so much, so much danger out there and so many predators out there that want to hurt our children. And we are blind, we turn a blind eye to what is out there and because it's so ugly. There's a recent study from the University of Central Florida that showed that there were 200,000 victims found, child victims of child sex trafficking in the state of Florida. 200,000. And I don't care if someone breaks my car window. If someone takes my child and sells them for sex, that's when I care. We need this law. And it's not so they're not out breaking car windows. In addition, I love what Ms. Phelps said, that the, our Sheriff's Department, and thank you for being here, and thank you for all that you do. Because I wouldn't have your job if my life depended on it. There has got to be training. From what I understand, and I've been wrong so many times, from what I understand, the Manatee County Sheriff's Office has had no formal training or certification on human trafficking. Which is a mirror to the fact that there has been, from October of '23 to the end of '24, one rescue of a human trafficking, a child sex trafficking victim, one. There's fish in a barrel with the victims out there. So in addition to the curfew law, with the training of the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department for this law, there also needs to be a mandated human trafficking training and certification. So that's all. It's about helping the children. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
For the record, Glenn Jubelina, I think this is a great idea. It's just another tool in the toolbox for our officers. That's what we need. So, you know, currently, if you get stopped, you have to have reasonable articulate suspicion they've committed a crime. This ordinance says, "We don't need that threshold anymore. You look like you're under 18. We're going to ask you for your ID." So that in itself is worth pursuing, is worth pursuing in that. The second thing I would do on the citation, I'm not sure how it works. You write it and he goes on? No, no. I mean, if the kid's in an apartment complex and you've got a slim jim in his pocket and that's not his address, then you know what? There has to be consequences for that. I think that every citation that is written, whether it be 11 o'clock or 2:00 in the morning, that officer needs to take that child. Hey, Mr. Jones, we got your kid out here. You have to sign this citation. And by the way, we're going to contact the school board and let them know what his court date is. So he better be there. Listen, you're right. Where are your kids now, right? We're have to be home at the streetlights. But anyways, I think the first citation, and believe me, the officers have discretion. If they're going, hey, I just got down my paper route. I got a rental, it was raining. I got a little late. Yeah, go ahead, no problem. They can give a pass for good reasons. They don't have to write citations like their speeding tickets in Georgia. You know, it doesn't have to be that way. We trust our officers to do the right thing. I think this is a great idea. I don't think, I think the first one, every kid should either be delivered to the house or Mr. Jones, we're down at the station, come get your kid. You got 30 minutes to get here, or he's going to lockup. Scared straight. I think they need that. Now, the real bad kids, they're going, that's going to, that's going to roll off like water off a duck's back. They're used to the system, so it may not always work on them. But it might, might straighten out the ones that may be going down that road. And I would be happy to yail my unit to the Bradenton Police Department if they want to come up because they've had the curfew. So maybe they can enlighten us if it works or not. But I think it's a step in the right direction, another tool for our officers, for the record.
Any other public comment here in the room? Seeing none. I have two hands raised on the phone. Caller 746, you're up.
Yeah, you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
All right, Keenan Wooten here, District 2 Regent. Everybody talks about, I was a good kid, I was a good kid. Well, I was a bad kid. Needed heavy interventions to get me to where I'm at today. This is a good, I'm in heavy support of this. You know, I'm an educator, teach, try to teach these kids the right things. I typically take on the schools. I see passenger area in the audience. I take on schools that nobody wants to be at. Title I schools, neighborhood schools, that nobody, and I don't get a Medal of Honor for any of it. But helping these kids, help them make the best decisions would do nothing but help our community. About two or three weeks ago, maybe about a month ago, a bullet went through my car. Came out, turns out it was a kid, he had argued with some people across the street from my house. Minor. And you know what the police told me? Well, we can't do anything because nobody saw him. Well, he wasn't supposed to be out. You know, that's my reality in my neighborhood. And it might not be the reality of your neighborhood, but something has to get done. One thing Dr. King always said, if you do nothing, you're part of the problem. Yeah, you can look at it and say, well, Mr. Wooten, that's your neighborhood and that's bad, but it affects us all. Just recently, the state, in Tallahassee, they passed a law, no cell phones for middle school and elementary students. Sometimes parents have to be told, you know, guided on what to do. And this will do nothing but help and guide and save lives as we continue on to make our communities the best and safe place to be. So I'm in support. And we're going to be out here and supporting our law enforcement as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Keenan. Caller 375. 375, you're up. 375? Last chance. All right. Okay. Are there any other public comments? No one, no other hands raised? Oh, wait. Are you there, 375? Nope. Okay, I will close public comment. There's nobody on the board to talk. So, but I also don't even have a motion at this point in time to discuss.
Okay, before I make the motion, Mr. Chairman, I want to give them a copy so it's put up there exactly word for word.
I have a copy, so I can get them back for you.
Okay. Okay. But I'll read the motion now out loud. I move to, one, direct the county attorney's office to draft a proposed juvenile curfew ordinance that would incorporate by reference the provisions of Sections 877.20 through 877.25 Florida statutes. And, two, direct county administration to, A, circulate the proposed ordinance to the Manatee County Sheriff's Office and the School District of Manatee County for their respective review and input. B, prepare the appropriate business impact estimate. C, cause all other necessary and appropriate documents and further of adopting the proposed ordinance to be drafted and properly advertised and/or published. And D, bring the proposed ordinance back to the board for consideration at a properly advertised public hearing.
I have that motion as read by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Sadek. It'll be up on the screen once they have an opportunity to write all of that. It's okay, we have people talking on the board, so you've got time. I put myself on and Commissioner Sadek is on. Look, I'll be quick. I could listen to comments like everybody else. I guess where votes are going to be. And that's, that's okay. That's the decision of a board. I just, again, I fundamentally disagree. I disagreed when they put a curfew on for COVID. I think government... I think government overreach is bad. I don't think government should dictate what day of the week my daughter can watch a movie. That's just my, that's just my opinion. And to say, parents are going to be more responsive because they may have to come down because of a written warning, parents can and should be more responsive now. If parents aren't, my daughter does still have a curfew. My son, when he lived at home, had a curfew, and it was up to me to enforce that curfew. And if I wasn't willing to enforce the curfew without an ordinance, I don't think this ordinance is going to change that for a parent. They're either going to or they're not. I don't think this is going to be a significant, if you wanted a threat, make it a $1,000 fine. Make it 30 days in jail, expulsion from a school. But you're not going to do that because those are ridiculous. But if that's really your end goal of protecting people, why are we stopping at 17 or 18? Why don't we just have a curfew for everybody? Then you're really going to start cutting down on crime, because that's asinine to do that. So why are we setting an arbitrary threshold, which Glenn kind of made worse with his comments? Because now we can say to the police, you can just kind of look at somebody without any suspicion of guilt, but if they kind of look a little young, then that's reason enough to pull someone over and throw them in jail? If someone doesn't come and get them in 30 minutes? And as Betty pointed out, if you all want to layer Glenn on top of Betty, there is going to be a disproportionate share of those people who are just assumed to be under a certain age that are pulled over based upon color of skin, based upon neighborhood that they're in, based upon what kind of car they're driving. There's going to be any number of reasons why someone can be profiled based on that, using that. I don't agree with that. Crimes are crimes. Keenan pointed out a crime that committed. That crime, with or without this ordinance, is illegal. You cannot shoot other people's cars with guns, as far as I'm aware. I don't know if we passed that ordinance, but I'm pretty sure. But what Keenan didn't point out is, he lives in the city of Bradenton. There is an ordinance. So if this ordinance has any teeth, that should have literally never happened. That must be an outlier of situations in the city of Bradenton, because this ordinance that they passed should have stopped that from occurring. The fact that it didn't means the kid shooting cars with guns doesn't care about your written warning or your $50 fine, because kids who shoot cars don't care about this ordinance. They just don't. I'm sorry. I do not like government television. There's parents that do things. There's teachers and school boards that do an excellent job of educating kids about the rights and wrongs of the world. Society does an excellent job. I don't think us taking the assumption of guilt of every kid based solely on their age is the appropriate course of action for kids. I'm sorry. So I disagree with this ordinance. I agree with how our police handle things in the cities. I agree with how our sheriff handled things in unincorporated. I think they do an excellent job. Everybody's working to make sure they're properly funded and staffed to make sure that we keep our crimes down as best as we possibly can. But where's the line? What age do we move it to next? How much earlier do we make it next time? This is not going to solve the problems you think it's going to solve, because the people who are going to cause those problems do not care about this ordinance. Commissioner Sadek.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the motion is written, I think, is a fairly thoughtful approach, because it involves interagency coordination, and that's Section C of that motion. No, A, or A through D, but subsection A, circulating to the school district and MSO. That was going to be a condition of my support, because we make ordinance, we cannot make ordinances in a vacuum. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness with which we're at least soliciting input and still presenting an ordinance back. I mean, the one from today is just sample language. I don't, I don't think it's, and I think this board agrees, that's not the one we want to support. But I do agree that we need some more input from law enforcement. You're not going to get it from here. I think it's better having those conversations between staff, and of course, the school district as well. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness there. Polk County, Miami Dade, and I think Duval County, according to my research, implemented various forms of it, that generally the times tend to be between, they tend to vary based on weekend or weekday. So I think we can certainly look to those examples and hear from our deputies, perhaps even learn from our partners in the city of Bradenton, to see what are things that worked, what has not worked. We have more resources with the MSO than the city of Bradenton does. Responding to some of the public comments, just briefly, so I think there's a logical error in the way the debate's happening on this particular issue. Just because we have the First Amendment in our country's constitution does not prevent someone from violating my First Amendment rights. When I was living up north, it didn't stop people from implementing curfews violating my First, Second Amendment rights when they were implementing COVID curfews. That's why I live in Florida now, and I'm very happy with that. But simply having a law on the books is not going to stop bad behavior. It's about ensuring that our law enforcement or the appropriate agencies and departments have teeth. Now, I've lived in cities and places that gave their police officers no teeth, and that's why you get the roving gangs of kids terrorizing neighborhoods, and the cops are sitting by because they have no support from their elected officials. Thank God we're not like that here in Florida and in Manatee County. So for me, this is about crafting a thoughtful ordinance with their feedback, so we're not just going out on a whim with the school district's feedback, because you understand the situation your kids, your, the kids' families are in, so we can get your feedback on something thoughtful there. So I look forward to seeing what comes back from that. Thank you.
Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to have to disagree with you, Chairman Cruz. Here's why. We have policies put in place in the state for alcohol, correct? You cannot drink unless you're 21 and over. Why? For the safety and welfare, we're not just going to allow kids to drink alcohol. We're not going to allow kids to go and smoke cigarettes. There's a specific age on that, at 18. You cannot buy tobacco products unless you are 18 years old. Why? For the safety and welfare of our children. I cannot go to war as a 16-year-old child. I cannot fight a battle as a 15-year-old child. Why? Because of the safety and welfare of our children. So implementing a curfew such as this is for the safety and welfare of our children. And that's what we have to look, because that's what our job is up here. They are not adults. So when those curfews were put in place, those curfews were put in place on adults during COVID, which I completely disagree with. But it's our job to set policy for the safety and welfare of our children, and so I'm going to have to completely disagree with you on this one. I'm going to support this measure. I thank everybody for their time coming out and speaking their voice.
All right. Commissioner Ballard.
Yeah, just briefly. I did want to address some of the statements that the lady who has worked in human trafficking has addressed, and I do think that that's very important. I worked in the local child welfare system for eight years, and a lot of times, if you see a child who's out on the street late at night, in the middle of the night, and they're not committing a crime, the police currently, they don't have a way to engage with that child and to talk with that child and to find out what's going on with that child. There is a possibility that that child is, for example, being trafficked, or there's a possibility that they're out on the street because they're being abused at home, or there's a possibility that they're out on the street at 2:00 in the morning because they don't want to be home with their parents who are high and passed out. And so then, when you bring that child home, and you knock on the door, and you say, Mr. Jones, I want to, you know, I want to talk to you about why your child's out at 2:00 in the morning, you find something that maybe you weren't expecting, and you have the opportunity to engage with that family and to provide that child with a second chance that they, you never would have had if you didn't have an ordinance like this. So that's another, another avenue that I think is just as, if not more, important, is having the ability to engage with kids who are out late at night and understand the reasons why, and to help families that are in crisis. So that's just one, one little addition to the conversation. Thank you.
All right. I only have one commissioner left on board, Commissioner McCann, if you want to close out. Otherwise, I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Bearden, and the vote's already cast, so you can speak if you want, but there's only...
I just want to close out for one second. I worked emergency room for 37 years, and I can tell you, in the emergency room, I saw more kids at night than I ever did in the daytime. And it was assault, a lot of sexual assault, children being trafficked, child abuse. And, you know, it does break your heart to see these kids not protected. As far as profiling and things like that, I will tell you, they carded my wife yesterday for alcohol. She was flattered. Okay? The thing is that, you know, I would hope that, you know, everybody that would get stopped on this would look younger than I do.
That narrows it down.
And, you know, I really hope that, you know, this is a law that protects children. And, you know, this is a law in progress. This is something that's going to develop over time, and we'll see what works and what doesn't work, and then adjustments could be made to that. The other thing that happens a lot, you know, with our staff and with our county attorney is they don't get credit where it's due. I want you to know that the county attorney worded this ordinance for me. She did all the thoughtful work on this. My ordinance was actually, you know, a little less than this, and it was a little more vague. So I really appreciate your efforts in this. Thank you.
All right. There's no one else left on the board. There's a motion to approve by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Bearden. You can cast your votes now. It is approved, 6 to 1, with myself voting no. It is approved. We are now past 10:30, which is our usual break. We are going to take a 10-minute break till 10:45. When we come back, we've got two more items, and then the intern presentations. [Crosstalk] All right. We are back. We've got, uh, three items left, culminating with the intern presentations. Uh, I will revert back to item number 31. Do you have your consultant with you now? Okay. We'll go to item number 31. Presentation and acceptance of the Manatee County Vulnerability Assessment. You're up.
All right. Sherri Swanson, Manatee County Natural Resources Department. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today to present the results of the Manatee County's vulnerability assessment. The public presentation that we give today satisfies the final task under our Resilient Florida Grant Agreement. Joining me today is Jenna Phillips and Leonard Barrera Allen with Cummins-Cedarburg, and they'll be taking some of the slides, and Natalie Moreno with the Natural Resources Department, who all helped support this project. Next slide. Manatee County has been reviewing, oh, do I have the clicker? Sorry. Oh, sorry. Manatee County has been reviewing the topic of flooding since partnering with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council in 2018, when we developed the Sea Level Rise Inundation Mapper as part of the Peril of Flood Assessment. With the introduction of the Resilient Florida Program in 2021, Manatee County was able to expand upon that flood analysis with development of the vulnerability assessment. Since receiving the grant award in 2022, we have successfully obtained monetary amendments to expand the scope of our project to where we are today. The table shows the grant awards received to date, with 22 PLN 86 being the vulnerability assessment and 25 PLN 36, the adaptation plan. We have also been working with one implementation project, the Bishop Point Living Shoreline, and this team will soon begin working with Seaport Manatee to develop a standalone vulnerability assessment, economic analysis, and adaptation plan for that critical Manatee County-based facility. In total, the state has awarded over $1.7 million in funding to Manatee County to support the county's flood resilience efforts. Our vulnerability assessment included seven tasks, with tasks zero through four previously shared with some of you, and I've attempted to address some of the comments that you all have provided and feedback when we met. Today, we'll briefly review all tasks and introduce the upcoming adaptation plan. Importantly, this vulnerability assessment helps us identify and focus on flood-prone infrastructure, guiding future adaptation projects, and opening the door to future grant funding opportunities. The Natural Resources Department coordinated this vulnerability assessment with other Manatee County departments, including the identification and GIS mapping exercise of critical infrastructure assets managed by each department, and a sensitivity scoring exercise to help determine the flood risks posed to those infrastructure assets. So now I'll go through the seven tasks. Task zero focused on verifying that we intended to use the state's July 2024 data standards for this study. This included sea level rise, high tide, also known as sunny day flooding, extreme rainfall, storm surge, and compound flooding. For sea level rise, we followed the state recommendations and used NOAA's intermediate-low and intermediate projections looking out to 20, to years 2050 and 2080. For tidal flooding, we looked at sunny day flooding we're seeing today and projected out how that might look in the future. We also assessed 100-year and 500-year rainfall events, along with current and future storm surge risks. Finally, compound flooding combined the effects of sea level rise, extreme rainfall, high tide flooding, and storm surge to help us understand where multiple risks might overlap and compound the overall risk of flooding. The topographic elevation, or so, sorry, topographic elevations and current sea levels served as the baseline for the flood projections modeled for this study. If you look at this graph, the green line shows the historical tidal occurrences collected from the nearest NOAA tide gauge in St. Pete, which has been collecting sea level data since 1947. Notice the correlation to the red and blue lines that take that observed trend and project it into the future, representing the intermediate and the intermediate-low sea level scenarios recommended by the state. The boxes on the right are meant to help explain what this would mean based on actual sea levels recorded for 2024. Depending on the sea level projection used, we could see tides rise over a half a foot by 2050 to just over 50, 15 inches by 2080, under the intermediate-low projection. Under the intermediate projection, that range increases to about 3/4 of a foot higher sea level by 2050 to almost 2 feet by 2080. Task one focused on gathering background data, including critical and regionally significant assets. This was a GIS-based effort that involved coordination with various county departments to compile and calibrate local asset data. We also pulled in state records for regional assets, which are those that serve the broader community but that aren't directly managed by Manatee County. We looked at transportation and evacuation routes, critical infrastructure, natural, cultural, and historical resources, including parks and preserves, and community and emergency facilities such as hospitals, fire stations, and law enforcement buildings. I'm going to turn the next few slides over to Jenna Phillips with Cummins-Cedarburg.
Thank you, Sherri. So the following task, we completed an exposure analysis, which was basically taking into consideration the topographical land elevations that Sherri mentioned, in addition to the various water level scenarios associated with high tide, sea level rise, storm surge, rainfall, and the combined effects of those. So that amounted to a series of 18 different flood scenarios that you can see in the table on the left-hand side, in order to produce a series of flood maps, which you can see in one example there on the right-hand side. This particular example happens to be a future scenario associated with storm surge, so that's the 100-year storm surge scenario, or the 1% probability storm, as we might characterize it, for the future 2050 sea level rise scenario. So we looked at today's scenarios, because obviously we're experiencing some extent of flooding as it stands, associated with rainfall, high tide flooding, and storm surge, and then projecting into the future what differences that might account for. So today, in low-lying coastal areas, for example, we're seeing on the order of 2% to 3% of flood inundation associated with high tide. That number jumps to 5% to 6% associated with the 100-year storm surge scenario, and of course, as you add that 12 to 15 inches of sea level rise Sherri mentioned, those numbers increase. For the rainfall scenario, we see that widespread flooding throughout the county on the order of about 10% to 11% in today's condition. The following task was taking into consideration, adding, looking at both the assets that we identified as part of the study with the flood vulnerabilities, to develop an objective methodology to identify and rank order and priority the risks associated with each of these assets. And so that methodology included, on the left-hand side of this table, the series of assets you can see here. These are just some examples of those that were included. In the red box, we have a series of risk factors that we identified to come up with the associated scores. The first one being the severity score, and that severity was defined as the asset's ability to function while flooding or during a flood event. The second measure was the criticality score, which was measured based on how essential the asset was during an event. County staff from the various departments actually provided input to develop those scores for each individual asset. And then the vulnerability score was the degree of risk associated with the prior slide that you saw before. So that's what you see on the right-hand side, are the flood depths associated with each asset for each of those scenarios. So we provided kind of a mathematical calculation to develop those risk scores in an objective methodology approach. The following task of the grant required us to do a public workshop, so we did, uh, do, conduct that earlier this year in February. The right-hand side is just an example of the flyer that was put out to advertise the meeting. And during that meeting, the goal was really to obtain, uh, input from folks in neighborhood, various neighborhoods to understand real-world events, give them opportunity to provide input on the following tasks in the study. The, the image on the left-hand side is a poster board that we created to have some interactive feedback on where folks were seeing flooding and how that might align, and help to inform us in identifying the subsequent task, which was to create focus areas. So the state's grant requires us to identify what's called focus areas, and those are intended to look at, um, uh, the density of critical assets within a certain area wherein there's a greater level of flood risk. So for this study, we identified 13 different focus areas, and that captured just under 1,500 of the county's critical assets as defined as part of the study. Among those, that actually captured nearly 90% of those that were rated as the higher-risk score. So we really tried and made it quite an effort in coordination with the county and Sherri's team to make sure we captured those. And this information and identification of these focus areas will be helpful as part of that subsequent effort to complete the adaptation plan. I'll turn it back over to Sherri.
Okay, thank you. So last week, we completed the vulnerability assessment report, which has been provided for your review and acceptance. And like Jenna was talking about with the focus areas, um, so we initially identified 20, over 28,000 assets and compiled those, and of those, we evaluated close to 2,500 that met the definition of critically and regionally significant per the state statute. Of those, 94% of them did have some degree of flood risk, specifically 41% had low risk, 34% had medium risk, and 19% had high risk, which translated to about 461 of our assets with high risk. The 13 voc, the 13 focus areas did a pretty good job of capturing the total assets inventoried, and of the 461 high-risk assets, 44 of them, or 96%, were located within one of the focus areas, though we intend to evaluate all high-risk, low-risk, and medium-risk assets in our adaptation plan. This slide provides an example of some of the assets that received the highest scores. I know some of you were curious about that. Seaport Manatee had a pretty high score. You can see the Cypress Bridge, the K Road over Cypress Strand, one of the sheriff's offices, the one out on Anna Maria Island, some fire stations, Bayside Park on Anna Maria, some lift stations received high scores, and some of the outfalls, particularly you're seeing the bullet here for Bully's Creek. So this is just an example of some of the assets that were highly vulnerable to flooding. This public presentation is the final task under the Resilient Florida Grant Agreements. Our final deliverable will be this presentation and a user interface GIS story map being finalized now. Although funding for this project was announced in 2022, the bulk of this project has occurred over the past 12 months, due in part to our desire to utilize the state most current data standards for this vulnerability assessment, which was approved in July of 2024. With this, with completion of the vulnerability assessment, Manatee County is now eligible to apply for specific project funding through the Resilient Florida Program. This could include additional planning grant projects awarded without match requirements, such as things like stormwater management plans, watershed management plans, seawall assessments, and living shorelines, as well as implementation projects which are funded at 50% match. Some examples of implementation projects that other communities have received approval from include coastal resilience for roadways, stormwater conveyance projects, seawall hardening projects, and sanitary lift station projects. And that's just a small sample of what's been approved. Over the coming months, we will begin developing the Manatee County Adaptation Plan. This plan will allow us to take a deeper look at strategies to protect the assets identified by the vulnerability assessment. The plan will give us a chance to explore policy tools like coastal land use, seawall standards, and building guidelines in flood-prone areas, as well as incentives for nature-based solutions and stormwater management. Interestingly, some communities have even used their plans to build GIS tools for real-time flood tracking by the public, as well as public alerts that can be sent out on that app. Ultimately, our plan will help identify priority implementation projects that we can apply for funding through the Resilient Florida Program. We appreciate your time and let us know if you have any questions, please.
Sure. Thank you, and to the consultant, thank you all for working on this. When I joined the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, this is one of the first things I asked. I dove into to learn more about, because they obviously provide a lot of support, and I was pleased to hear that we're already working on it, and now we're done, so, almost done. So thank you for that, and I encourage you all to continue with the action plan. That was my question in briefings, to see what the, the next steps are, how can we set aside and prepare funds? Granted, we're towards the end of the budget process, but I, we don't have a specific list of projects with more specific dollar amounts, but I would like to see that for, as soon as you can, and then, quick questions. For the GIS layers, do we have a, a layer that identifies this infrastructure with an RGS now?
Yes, we do, and it's been really nicely cleaned up as part of this project.
Got it. Are there any proactive steps we can take to prepare for some of the lift station relocations, street elevations, and more? City of Bradenton has had to go through a fairly lengthy process to update one of their, move one of their lift stations, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of back and forth with certain property owners, but they got it done. Long Bow Keys, Raising Streets, you know, what can we do in Rebonia to consider that? I'm just curious, are there any preliminary steps we're, we're taking right now to prepare for those?
So we're just kicking off now our adaptation plan. We have $125,000 through the state to kick that off, and that's going to look at the most vulnerable assets that were identified in the vulnerability assessment, and there are lift stations and roads that were considered there. So the next steps will be to look closer at those projects and identify as a county which ones we may want to develop adaptation measures for, and we can certainly prioritize ones that the county is seeing are at greater risk, confirm that they're in our plan, but they should be in our plan, they just, depending on what they were ranked, but the ranking really isn't going to matter, you know, a medium-risk stuff, we could still decide to improve a medium-risk asset as well. So is that what you are looking?
No, that's helpful. It sounds like there's just more time needed to identify projects and allocate, and identify how much they'll cost at the end of the day, and establish a priority matrix, well, build upon the priority matrix that's been established.
Yeah, so interestingly, we also just got the funding for the Seaport Manatee project, and in that project, we have added an economic analysis. That was not part of our adaptation plan. However, Jenna and I were just speaking before this meeting, how it could be something that we could try to get additional funding to do, and that would help us develop an economic plan forward to address the highly vulnerable assets that, in our community.
One of the things I'm concerned about is the funding strategy, so I'll, I hear a lot about grant funds for these projects, and I understand that's, I understand why we have that, but is there any consideration for other funding sources, general funds, IST funds? Because the concern is this is important infrastructure. We're talking lift stations, we're talking roads, just as important as new things we're building. So if nothing else, my, my ask would be to consider those alternative funding sources, and let's not just rely on grants, because these people pay taxes, they deserve that their community's invested in.
You're making me think that probably our first step
We mentioned those numbers increase. For the rainfall scenario, we see that widespread flooding throughout the county on the order of about 10 to 11% in today's condition. The following task was taking into consideration, looking at both the assets that we identified as part of the study with the flood vulnerabilities to develop an objective methodology to identify and rank order and priority the risks associated with each of these assets. And so that methodology included, on the left-hand side of this table, the series of assets you can see here. These are just some examples of those that were included. In the red box, we have a series of risk factors that we identified to come up with the associated scores. The first one being the severity score. And that severity was defined as the asset's ability to function while flooding or during a flood event. The second measure was the criticality score, which was measured based on how essential the asset was during an event. County staff from the various departments actually provided input to develop those scores for each individual asset. And then the vulnerability score was the degree of risk associated with the prior slide that you saw before. So that's what you see on the right-hand side are the flood depths associated with each asset for each of those scenarios. So we provided kind of a mathematical calculation to develop those risk scores in an objective methodology approach. The following task of the grant required us to do a public workshop. So we did do, conduct that earlier this year in February. The right-hand side is just an example of the flyer that was put out to advertise the meeting. And during that meeting, the goal was really to obtain input from folks in various neighborhoods to understand real-world events, give them opportunity to provide input on the following tasks in the study. The image on the left-hand side is a poster board that we created to have some interactive feedback on where folks were seeing flooding and how that might align and help to inform us in identifying the subsequent task, which was to create focus areas. So the state's grant requires us to identify what's called focus areas, and those are intended to look at the density of critical assets within a certain area wherein there's a greater level of flood risk. So for this study, we identified 13 different focus areas, and that captured just under 1,500 of the county's critical assets as defined as part of the study. Among those, that actually captured nearly 90% of those that were rated as the higher-risk score. So we really tried and made it quite an effort in coordination with the county and Sherry's team to make sure we captured those. And this information and identification of these focus areas will be helpful as part of that subsequent effort to complete the adaptation plan. I'll turn it back over to Sherry.
Okay, thank you. So last week, we completed the vulnerability assessment report, which has been provided for your review and acceptance. And like Jenna was talking about with the focus areas, so we initially identified 20, over 28,000 assets and compiled those. And of those, we evaluated close to 2,500 that met the definition of critically and regionally significant per the state statute. Of those, 94% of them did have some degree of flood risk. Specifically, 41% had low risk, 34% had medium risk, and 19% had high risk, which translated to about 461 of our assets with high risk. The 13 focus areas did a pretty good job of capturing the total assets inventoried. And of the 461 high-risk assets, 44 of them, or 96%, were located within one of the focus areas, though we intend to evaluate all high-risk, low-risk, and medium-risk assets in our adaptation plan. This slide provides an example of some of the assets that received the highest scores. I know some of you were curious about that. Seaport Manatee had a pretty high score. You can see the Cypress Bridge, the K Road over Cypress Strand, one of the sheriff's offices, the one out on Anna Maria Island, some fire stations, Bayside Park on Anna Maria. Some lift stations received high scores, and some of the outfalls, particularly you're seeing the bullet here for Bully's Creek. So this is just an example of some of the assets that were highly vulnerable to flooding. This public presentation is the final task under the Resilient Florida Grant agreements. Our final deliverable will be this presentation and a user interface GIS story map being finalized now. Although funding for this project was announced in 2022, the bulk of this project has occurred over the past 12 months, due in part to our desire to utilize the state most current data standards for this vulnerability assessment, which was approved in July of 2024. With this, with completion of the vulnerability assessment, Manatee County is now eligible to apply for specific project funding through the Resilient Florida program. This could include additional planning grant projects awarded without match requirements, such as things like stormwater management plans, watershed management plans, seawall assessments, and living shorelines, as well as implementation projects which are funded at 50% match. Some examples of implementation projects that other communities have received approval from include coastal resilience for roadways, stormwater conveyance projects, seawall hardening projects, and sanitary lift station projects. And that's just a small sample of what's been approved. Over the coming months, we will begin developing the Manatee County Adaptation Plan. This plan will allow us to take a deeper look at strategies to protect the assets identified by the vulnerability assessment. The plan will give us a chance to explore policy tools like coastal land use, seawall standards, and building guidelines in flood-prone areas, as well as incentives for nature-based solutions and stormwater management. Interestingly, some communities have even used their plans to build GIS tools for real-time flood tracking by the public, as well as public alerts that can be sent out on that app. Ultimately, our plan will help identify priority implementation projects that we can apply for funding through the Resilient Florida program. We appreciate your time, and let us know if you have any questions, please.
Sure. Thank you, and to the consultant, thank you all for working on this. When I joined the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, this is one of the first things I asked. I dove into to learn more about because they obviously provide a lot of support, and I was pleased to hear that we're already working on it, and now we're done. So, almost done. So thank you for that, and I encourage you all to continue with the action plan. That was my question in briefings, to see what the next steps are, how can we set aside and prepare funds? Granted, we're towards the end of the budget process, but we don't have a specific list of projects with more specific dollar amounts, but I would like to see that for as soon as you can. And then, quick questions. For the GIS layers, do we have a layer that identifies this infrastructure with an RGS now?
Yes, we do, and it's been really nicely cleaned up as part of this project.
Got it. Are there any proactive steps we can take to prepare for some of the lift station relocations, street elevations, and more? City of Bradenton has had to go through a fairly lengthy process to update one of their, move one of their lift stations, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of back and forth with certain property owners, but they got it done. Long Bow Keys, Raising Streets, you know, what can we do in Rebonia to consider that? I'm just curious, are there any preliminary steps we're taking right now to prepare for those?
So we're just kicking off now our adaptation plan. We have $125,000 through the state to kick that off, and that's going to look at the most vulnerable assets that were identified in the vulnerability assessment, and there are lift stations and roads that were considered there. So the next steps will be to look closer at those projects and identify as a county which ones we may want to develop adaptation measures for. And we can certainly prioritize ones that the county is seeing are at greater risk, confirm that they're in our plan. They should be in our plan, they just, depending on what they were ranked, but the ranking really isn't going to matter. You know, a medium-risk stuff, we could still decide to improve a medium-risk asset as well. So is that what you are looking?
No, that's helpful. It sounds like there's just more time needed to identify projects and identify how much they'll cost at the end of the day and establish a priority matrix, well, build upon the priority matrix that's been established.
Yeah, so interestingly, we also just got the funding for the Seaport Manatee project, and in that project, we have added an economic analysis. That was not part of our adaptation plan. However, Jenna and I were just speaking before this meeting how it could be something that we could try to get additional funding to do, and that would help us develop an economic plan forward to address the highly vulnerable assets that, in our community.
One of the things I'm concerned about is the funding strategy. So I hear a lot about grant funds for these projects, and I understand that's, I understand why we have that, but is there any consideration for other funding sources, general funds, IST funds? Because the concern is this is important infrastructure. We're talking lift stations, we're talking roads, just as important as new things we're building. So if nothing else, my ask would be to consider those alternative funding sources, and let's not just rely on grants, because these people pay taxes, they deserve that their community's invested in.
You're making me think that probably our first step should be, for the adaptation plan, is to meet with each department and really talk about the assets that have been ranked in their departments. Because part of the implementation funds down the road, that only pays 50% anyways. So if we were to work with each of the departments and see which assets we really need to prioritize, we can start working now to figure out how we could make that 50% match and get the other 50% from the state, or find another funding source as well. So that might be a very good first step.
I think she has something to say, too.
Oh, hi. Just gonna add to that, I hope you can go back to that last slide, too. So there are grant opportunities, but I agree that that's not something you can solely rely on as a community. So the state, the Resilient Florida Grant Program does allow for these infrastructure options for implementation, but that does require the 50-50 match. There are two planning-level grants that are 100% funded through the state if you were successful in that grant eligibility. And the key there is going to be that adaptation planning where we identify for each asset that's impacted, what the range of solutions may look like. And then that next step would be to identify the order of magnitude cost associated with that. I think that you're right, establishing then what are the tools in the toolbox for funding that, but certainly can't just rely on the grants. That can definitely be considered.
Got it. One last thing. So this primary, these types of studies concern almost folks exclusively on public infrastructure. One of the things I liked up in Hillsborough, Pinellas, one of the things that they did recently was establish the multi-agency review team, MART, as they called it. So they brought in Army Corps, they brought in DEP, SWF MUD, to, and their Development Services Team, I see Nicole back there, to front-load reviews for private infrastructure that, with a focus to look at resiliency, whether that's living shorelines, seawalls, whatever. I thought it was a pretty good idea. Love to see some partnership to figure out what we can do to, we fast-track affordable housing, I think we should fast-track repairs, that's what we're getting dinged over with Senate Bill 180, or at least challenge the intent for that. But it's something I'd like to see, because they had a pretty good approach to it, because many of the permits require federal agency, state agency input. And so essentially, they just front-loaded the reviews and said, hey, let's just get our engineers in a room quarterly and review these permits that might come through. So it's something I'd like to see considered.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
We can do that. You're welcome.
All right. I have nobody else on the board. I will open this up to public comment. Seeing none, and I cannot see the phones, I'm assuming there's none. Well, we need a motion to accept this.
So moved.
Second. That was a question, not a statement, but I've got a motion and a second, so we're gonna run with it. I have a motion to approve whatever it was I just said by Commissioner Ron, and second by Commissioner Sadek. No one's on the board, you can cast your votes now. Tal, you gonna vote on this, or what? And it's approved 7-2-0. Thank you very much, appreciate it. There's one more item before the interns, it's, I guess technically, under me for Commissioner Agenda items, this will be super fast. Every year, FAC, Part Association of Counties, has policy conferences to discuss different policies that are important to counties. We discuss them, and then that's what they advocate for up in Tallahassee during session. One of the big ones this year is going to be Senate Bill 180, obviously. A couple of counties are proposing a couple of fixes. The first one to reach out looking for support was Pasco County. They basically just want a simple fix that better defines what property means in Senate Bill 180, to be specific to property damaged during a hurricane, which in theory is what they intended it to be, or implied it was intended to be. A lot of counties, when they put these policies up, they try to get support from other counties to give it some validity when we go into the policy conference in September. They already have support from Pinellas County, Hillsborough County, they reached out to us through Stephanie in Government Relations, just to get Manatee County to vote to support their motion. This doesn't preclude us from supporting other policy motions by other counties, but I think this makes sense, we should be supporting any efforts to fix Senate Bill 180, this being one of them. So that's all this is, is looking for somebody to make a motion to support Pasco County's proposal to FAC.
So moved.
And I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Sadek. I do have two people on the board. Commissioner Sadek.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was bringing up the lobbying update item a couple of meetings ago, I considered this particular language. I think the, what I'd be curious to see is what they consider to be, what they consider to be damages, and then which properties. Is someone's land flooding out east, a developer that owns massive tracts of land, are they gonna consider that damage? I don't, I was kind of worried about tweaking the language as opposed to just arguing for repeal. I mean, I'll support any opposition, really, but I just wanted to address that it's not quite clear by what measure they're looking to identify properties, and then what specifically are damages. But perhaps it's left open-ended to refine those with legislators, so, other than that, I'm happy to support this.
Sure. And as you know, because you've been to one of these last year after you got elected, there's lots of dialogue. I'm guessing you probably signed up for most, if not all, of the policy boards, so you'll probably be sitting on whichever policy board this gets allocated to. I'm the Chair of Health, Safety, and Justice, which it will not be assigned to, but there'll be plenty of opportunity, as you've seen, for dialogue amongst elected officials to fine-tune the language. Commissioner Phelps.
Thank you. I agree with Tal, anything that we could do to make sure we've got good clarifications on this law, or we can repeal the things that we don't like about it. We haven't really gotten, I don't know if the public is aware of, and again, I'm speaking to a lot of my constituents, because things that I've learned, too. The Florida Association of Counties has kind of a unique history in Florida. It was originally created to deal with roaming cattle when we had no range laws. That was at about, what was George, about 20s or 30s, maybe, maybe 30s. We didn't get range laws until the 50s, so it takes a little while for, you know, that to run. We pay about, I think we pay about, what, $140,000 a year to belong to the Florida Association of Counties? Charlie, somewhere around that number?
I believe I did tell you that, I may have mixed that up with the Tampa Bay Regional Division.
It's based on population, so we, you know, basically, we pay to belong to the organization. There's a lot of things, I usually, I have not made any trips, as I believe some of the other commissioners had to this, but they put out a lot of very good information, and it's good to have, I have other friends that are members of it from other counties in the state. So I think that we can go forward with any measures in which we could have a productive dialogue about the intent of this bill, about the ramifications of this bill, and working with other counties to see what we could do about making it right. Thank you.
All right. No one is on the board. I will open this up to public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Sadek. You can cast your votes now. And that is approved 7-2-0, so Stephanie, you can let Pasco County know we're on board. All right, that is the end of our regular agenda, and now we're gonna revert all the way back to item number two, presentation of the capstone projects by selected 2025 summer interns. Kate, are you presenting this?
We have a video queued up for you this morning.
I feel like this internship experience has been so great so far. I've learned so many things. I've had LinkedIn learning lessons, I've had resume building, I've had networking experiences, and I've really just loved it overall.
I think the internship has been so valuable because I'm getting hands-on experience while I'm still in college. You can't really do that while you're in school sometimes, because you're so busy with work, but when you're at the county, it's so easy to just, you know, meet everyone, really network with people, and also get that experience hands-on, you know, so directly with the county, and it looks great on my resume.
I was actually surprised by the amount of opportunities that was offered to me. I was expecting to only participate in IT events, but actually, HR basically allowed us to see all the different amenities and the different resources within Manatee County, which was really good.
I've actually already landed a job offer for when I finish my internship, and I honestly don't believe that I would have gotten that opportunity without my internship experience to kind of reference back to in my interview.
Yeah, I could see myself working with Manatee County. I think here, I would have the opportunity to do valuable work, and a really good environment, and a good place for me to learn and grow.
Thank you so much, and good morning. Kate Barnett, HR Director. And thank you to the board for the continued support of our internship program. This initiative wouldn't be possible without the coordination and leadership of our HR training team, Teresa Becht, Katie Nielsen, and our, the June team member of the month, Jerome Pittman, as well as the dedication of our 26 mentors this summer. With your support, we've proudly grown the program over the past five years, resulting in 25 full-time hires. And something that, that is something that we are truly proud of. This year, we not only saw the program grow in size, but we also watched as interns and mentors collaborated across departments, demonstrating that work that matters is achieved with the efforts of our most valuable asset, our team members. Our 28 interns completed 24 impactful projects, many with a strong GIS theme, further showing that innovation and forward thinking happening across the county, and we're excited to share their impressive work with you this morning. Natalie?
Hi, good morning. My name's Natalie Huertas. Just wait for a presentation to show up on the screen here. Okay, my project was on the data inventory of GIS resources throughout the entire county. With that, I created a GIS catalog website. My mentor is Robert Burke. My co-intern is Kelsey Dos Santos, who actually isn't here today because she got another job opportunity, but I'll be presenting on behalf of the both of us. This project was spurred about by an audit that we got from Esri. They analyzed our geospatial strategy that we used in Manatee County. They actually do these audits nationwide and analyze counties all over the US. They were able to give us key recommendations to improve and optimize the systems that we currently have in place. Firstly, they emphasized how important GIS is in our county. Over 1,000 staff members use GIS every single day, which makes up about 40% of our staff. They also pointed out to us how the ratio of our GIS staff to GIS user is alarmingly low, especially compared to other counties with similar business operations. Even when you're thinking about population, Miami has about four to five times the population of us, Tallahassee with a much smaller population than us, and our ratio remains low compared to them. This further emphasizes why creating these important structures and processes only makes the workload and upkeep of GIS in our county easier for all parties involved. Creating this catalog is part of Phase 1 of improving structure and process for the GIS operating model in the county. And the main problem it solves is being able to find these items quickly. So a lot of times, we'll be wondering, does this map exist? Or maybe you know that the map exists, but you're not sure where to find it, who has it, or where to access it. And as it stands right now, it's a very decentralized system. So every GIS staff member kind of does their own thing, makes maps as needed, and doesn't communicate with other departments first before creating these items. With this directory, we're moving towards a more hybrid system so that we're keeping all of our resources in one place and able to communicate with each other better. This helps with duplication of items, because as it stands right now, we have a lot of duplications of the same maps, and a lot of these items are outdated or irrelevant. Again, there's no protocol in place right now to find these resources. Everyone's kind of getting lucky and communicating, bouncing around, doing emails through Teams, and again, this can be an inefficient use of time and resources when we're having to informally just ask, hey, do you know who has this map? No, but I'm gonna ask so-and-so. And they might have to ask a few more people before you finally find the item we're looking for. And that especially is not useful when, you know, the key player is on vacation, on leave, or maybe someone went home early for the day because of a doctor's appointment. We started this process by emailing and meeting with key GIS staff and users to get their feedback on what they would like to see in a catalog, what would make these items easier to find. With their feedback, we were able to make individualized Excel sheets and send these all out to the owners of the GIS items for them to fill out their respective sheets. And with that information, we were able to make the Manatee County GIS hub. So it's in the name, it's gonna be the GIS hub for all of Manatee County, so you can easily find all these resources in one place. One of the key features of this is the search bar, which lets you search an item by title, the item type, the date created, owner name, as well as link, department, division, if it's still in use, and tags as well. These also include a brief description. And the main feature of this catalog, or feature that's important of this, is that you can look up the existence of something regardless of your access privileges, which is something we weren't able to do before. So again, you're duplicating things with this system, you can actually confirm that something exists, get in contact with the person who owns it, and not waste as much time. So an example of this is looking up the word flag. Maybe I can't remember the name of the full title, but you can see right away, if I look up flag, Manatee County Honor Box Flag drop-off pops up. I can see it's a story map, I can see the owner is Mackenzie Lang. And then a key feature here is, and under link, there's actually hyperlink there, so I don't even have to reach out to Mackenzie. I can just click right on that link and get right to the resource I'm looking for. If for some reason that link is restricted and Mackenzie's on vacation, I can also look under alternate contact, and I see that Erin is actually the alternate contact. So I know right away who to contact if, for some reason, Mackenzie's out of town, or there's an issue with the map. I can also see in that last column if the item is still in use. So that tells us if that information is still relevant, and if it is still accurate. Throughout this process, we also determined that there were actually a lot of items that weren't being used and were later reclassified as deprecated or deleted. So over this process, we ended up deleting over 500 items, which in turn saves the county money, because we're using less credits, saves us storage, and this also improved the performance and manageability of our GIS systems, because it's now gonna be way easier to find any items we're looking for, especially in urgent or emergency situations. Lastly, it's also gonna lead to better data quality, because again, we've deleted a lot of these items that are no longer relevant. And again, this is a GIS hub, so we've also included hyperlinks to all of our other non-incorporated, incorporated areas of Manatee County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, wait, wait. Commissioner Ballard's on the board.
Sorry, I just have a quick question. This is, this is wonderful. This is, I think, much needed. So I guess my question is, how can residents, employees, or commissioners access this new GIS hub?
So this would be internal. I can make sure that this is on the INET, and I'll make sure to send out a link of this to all the commissioners and important key staff, department heads, so that everyone can access this. But it is internal, just so that we can find our resources quickly, especially in emergency situations.
Makes sense. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Phelps.
Hi, this is one of my favorite little things. We've come a long way on this, too. It's just reminiscing with Charlie that our last crop of interns, I guess that was in 2021, came and introduced some wonderful things, and we were doing redistricting that year, and we were handed a crayon.
Yeah.
And this has just come a great way. However, it's been a little bit difficult for our citizens to follow along with that knowledge. Everyone knows my district is huge. I could put wallpapering on my office and never get the detail of the map and the things that we need. We have been, District 1 has really, we've gone out there, we've really encouraged our citizens to use our website, to use our GIS mapping system, because we're a vast area out there. And a lot of times, too, when we talk about land use issues and things like that, we're getting to be a big, a big place. And I don't know everywhere, I've lived in Manatee County for 40 years, but things have changed. I might not know every single place in Commissioner Ballard's district, and it's just been a great tool. However, I appreciate what you've come in to do, that we get a little bit sometimes carried away. Charlie knows how I feel about QR codes.
Yeah.
On little bitty signs. And sometimes we need to have, again, coming in with the perspective of, okay, this is what we've got, but how are we using it? Are we using it efficiently? And is, and more importantly, are we using it, are our citizens using it? Because in the end, they're the ones that are paying for it. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's going to be a really useful tool for us to be able to help our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, County Chairman, County Commissioners, County Administrator, and County Attorney. It is an honor and pleasure to be in front of you today. My name is Hudson Knapp, and I'm under the mentorship of Deputy Director of Property Management, Carmine D'Amelio. And my portion of this project for the ADA Transition Plan has been focusing on our missing curb ramps in Manatee County.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Alexia Fuentes. My mentor is Eric Schreuer. I am in the Public Works Department, and I'm helping the county with their ADA Transition Plan. Now, a little bit of background about the ADA, it is the Americans with Disabilities Act. Now, Title II of the ADA, which was passed in 1990, requires that local governments need to develop an ADA Transition Plan. This plan needs to address the removal of all of our physical barriers and all of our public entities. Now, as of 2023, it is estimated that roughly 15% of our civilian population has a disability.
To answer any of the questions revolving around what is a missing curb ramp, the ADA guidelines provided to us instruct that curb ramps that are missing are when there is curb barriers and/or no ramp present for pedestrian way of travel. For 99% of our identified missing ramps in the county, they're going to fall under the second portion of that phrase, as there's just no ramp present. And some of the common deficiencies that cause this include there being no sidewalks, driveway obstructions, or stormwater drainage obstructions.
Okay, now, our transition, our transition plan has three phases. Phase one is currently complete. This is where our team went into our GIS system and identified all of the existing and missing ramps. On that map, you see yellow and gray dots. Those are the existing ramps. The missing ramps are shown by the black dots. Now, Phase Two is currently in progress, and this is where we went to our same system and completed a desktop survey using Google Street View and answered a series of basic questions. So a little bit about what our curb ramps look like, the good, the bad, the ugly. On the left, you see a very ideal ramp. This has a detectable warning, crosswalk striping, a pedestrian button. This is very ideal. In the middle, it is not as ideal. We have a sidewalk that tapers off into a very, very narrow ramp that also has no detectable warning or crosswalk striping. This is not ideal. Now, on the very right, this is really bad. There's pooling of water, there's accumulation of debris, we can't even see if there's a detectable warning. This, we would classify as non-compliant.
This is an example of what our missing ramps look like in the GIS system. For the understanding purposes of the picture, the red is going to indicate Manatee County sidewalks, the yellow arrows are pedestrian way of travel, and then the black dots at the tip of the arrows are going to be our locations of our missing ramps. From the northwest corner headed over to the northeast corner, the sidewalk that curves around does not have a pickup location, so we would simply just need to add a ramp there to attach it. And then from the northwest headed down to the southwestern corner, there's currently a driveway in the way of pedestrian travel. So to combat this, we would implement the ramp a few feet over to the right. These are our two most common types of missing ramp classifications, that being no ramp or driveway obstructions. And they often consist within neighborhoods at T intersections such as this one. However, that is not always the case within the county. The same parameters apply with the color of red, yellow, and black. However, this time, the blue teal lines indicate sidewalk gapping that needs to be implemented, and the green dot up towards the northern portion of the image is a Manatee County bus stop location. For this ramp, we would need to extend the sidewalks along the blue lines to attach to the current bus stop sidewalk so people can come and go as they please in a safe manner. We would extend the ramp to meet the sidewalk, and we recommend at the minimum, we add a crosswalk and button system for people to get across the street headed west to east. The next portion of Phase Two consisted of a categorization and inventory process for our missing ramps. We use the sector, roads, and Board of County Commissioner districts within Manatee County to easily locate the geographical area that our ramps are within. Next, we focus on schools. Each of our missing ramps was assigned in elementary, middle, and high school school zone. And then within those specific school zones, if they fall, if the ramp falls within a two mile of their specified school, they are technically within the walking distance for children each day who are headed to school. So this is a major safety concern for us as we want our children to be safe and have an accessible route each day to get where they need to be. Next, we looked at Manatee County bus stops and Manatee County parks. If the missing ramp is within 500 feet of a bus stop and/or 1,000 feet of a park, it was noted. And to conclude, we went one by one to classify the deficiencies of each missing ramp. This is a breakdown of what our data looks like for the missing ramps per the Board of County Commissioner districts. On the left-hand side is a numerical breakdown, and on the right-hand side is going to be a percentage distribution. And to answer any questions revolving around the total, there's right now 767 for those who are at large. The next portion, we, once the categorization was concluded, we went and did a relative safety analysis of each of our missing ramps and combined this in conjunction with the categorization process to create an estimated prioritization for said missing ramps. The prioritization was given on a low, moderate, or high scale. And an example of what a high-scale priority ramp looks like is going to be in the first line of the chart, as this ramp is within walking distance to all three of its public schools, it is within the specified distance to GTBA Park, and it is along a Manatee County bus route. Once again, we took the data and broke it down per Board of County Commissioner district. So some key takeaways from this is in District One, currently 26% of the missing ramps are under new development processes, meaning when those processes are completed, those missing ramps will be fully transformed into ADA compliant ramps. In District Five, there are zero ramps with a given, assigned estimated priority of high. However, in District Three, this is where we have our highest percentage of moderate and high-prioritized ramps.
Okay, Phase Three, this is where the interns played a large role. We are pioneering more efficient ways to collect data by hand. So as of currently, we are going out and conducting field surveys. We are going out with a smart level, a tape measure, a camera, and an iPad. We are also going out with a 24-question survey that we created. Right now, it is taking roughly 10 minutes per ramp. However, it is important to note that that is only survey time. It does not include travel time or navigating traffic, so it is easy to say that this phase will take years to complete. Now, in addition to the surveys, we need to take into consideration design. This is an existing intersection of Bay Shore Gardens Parkway and Georgia Avenue, which is a couple blocks from Bay Shore Elementary School. The black lines that we can see is an outline of a proposed design that I created. The most important key takeaway is that the crosswalk going north and south is going to be moved from the east side to the west side. Now, a more close-up, this is specifically the southeast corner. We would like to point out that the amount of detail that goes into these designs, the biggest issue with this corner was that there is a overlap between the driveway and the ramp, so we want to better differentiate those two to keep our pedestrians safe, so we are going to include a grass strip. We would, again, like to show the amount of detail, which includes elevations and slopes and all that. Now, for that complete intersection on the low end, it is going to cost roughly $28,000 with the reconstruction of four ramps and the new construction of two new ramps, along with the driveway construction. Now, it is important to know that that number does include the loading factor, which can include maintenance, engineering design, and inspections. Now, to bring a ramp up to compliance, it ranges from a $100 detectable warning to a $3,600 full reconstruction. And with over 12,000 existing ramps in the county and numerous variables, the total investment in this project will widely vary.
However, for the portion revolving around our missing ramps, we are more, we are able to more accurately predict a cost estimation. Right now, it is costing the county roughly $20,000 to $4,500 to implement each of our missing ramp, ramps, and this number also matches surrounding counties. So for all 767 of our identified missing ramps, we are looking at a range of roughly $1.5 to $3.5 million. And once again, that is broken down per district in the bottom right. An important key thing to note is that this does not include the cost for sidewalk expansions needed, as that is already budgeted for within our improvement plan.
So the next steps and recommendations. The next step would be to start and complete Phase Three, which will help us identify all of the non-compliance issues in the county, as well as further assist us with our prioritization. So to help speed up this process of Phase Three, we would like to recommend LiDAR laser scanners, which are light detection and ranging scanners, which we can put on our county trucks. Our county trucks are already out there driving our streets, so they may as well be collecting data. This data can range from road maintenance to sign collection, which would also help other departments, and it would also help us collect our ADA data. We would also like to recommend software such as Toko Dot, Cyclimedia, and Access Ramp, which will help us with, again, with data collection and the design process if we choose to move with this in-house. However, we would also like to recommend outsourcing the work to ADA consultants and contractors.
And to conclude for today, we would like to share a few lessons that we learned along this way during our internship. Some new skills that we developed were using GIS mapping, fieldwork, and using CAD as development process. The biggest lesson we took away was, it's really about who you know, so make sure you go out and network. We hold tremendous value and with a learning hands-on experience that we have not yet learned in school, and we are very grateful to be a part of increasing the accessibility within our home counties. We would like to thank you for the opportunity, both today and for the summer internship, and will now open the floor to any questions.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Commissioner Ballard.
Just a quick comment. So as, as you were going through the first portion of this, of this presentation, I was like, oh, this is great, this is great, but how much is it going to cost? So thank you very much for, for including those, those cost estimates on the back end because I was thinking that the entire time. A great presentation, so thank you very much for all the work that you did.
All right. Thank you very much. Excellent job.
Hello, everyone. My name is Summer Saros. I am a master's student at Florida State University. My mentor was Allison Minardi, and I worked for the Sports and Leisure Department. My presentation today is on facility accessibility and adaptive programming. My areas of focus were, we evaluated Manatee County's adaptive programs and playgrounds, as well as other counties' adaptive programming. We surveyed the community about adaptive programming. We led outreach for our first-ever Adapt and Play Expo, which will be coming in September. And we recommended enhancing programming in playgrounds, as well as hiring a full-time recreation therapist. Manatee County is already committed to this initiative through our programming and facilities. Through our programming, we provide accommodations at our camps, we offer adaptive play in our pools, fields, and courts. We have strong relationships with Easter Seals, the Kiwanis Club of Bradenton, and the Special Olympics. We offer adaptive pickleball with adaptive paddling in progress. Through our facilities, we already have our fully-inclusive Tom Bennett Playground. We have accessible bathrooms at all of our public parks and playgrounds, as well as accessible wheelchair picnic tables. We also are installing communication boards at playgrounds throughout the county. The community need. As mentioned in the previous presentation, we have about 61,000 people in the county with disability, which is 15%. Out of this population, 9,951 of those are ESE students, and 28,965 of those are veterans. Popular programs in other counties. We surveyed 24 counties throughout the state and found out that 17 of them offer programs for their disabled citizens. 14 of those counties offer sports-based programs, which is by far the most popular. The top three most popular programs are soccer, baseball, and tennis. Six counties offer social gathering-based programs, and seven offer programs based on arts. How other counties operate. Once again, with the same 24 counties, I broke, we broke them down into four different operation styles. Six have no dedicated staff or programming. Nine have no dedicated staff but host external programs. Five have one or two dedicated staff and host internal and external programs. And three have a full division of dedicated staff and a functioning facility to host internal programming. You might be wondering why Manatee County is floating between the blue and orange bar. That is because we have no dedicated staff, but we are in the process of installing and hosting external programs, such as our adaptive paddling and adaptive pickleball. Insight from neighboring counties. To increase participation and accessibility, we need free or low-cost adaptive sports and social gatherings. We need to partner with local organizations to raise awareness, rotate program locations for accessibility, focus on adults who have aged out of youth programs, which typically end at the age of 21 or 22, and develop a program, a branded program name, and collaborate with neighboring counties for broader impact. Community survey results. We created and conducted a 16-question survey that was available to the public for 21 days. We received 63 responses from parents, guardians, people with varying abilities, and their caretakers. What they want is they want inclusive outdoor activities and games, and they want adaptive sports. When they want it? They want it on weekday afternoons and evenings, and weekend mornings and afternoons. Why they want it? They want it because they enjoy meeting new people, people in similar situations, and most importantly, it helps them feel like they belong and have a place in Manatee County. Playground accessibility. We surveyed 30 county playgrounds. 37% have two accessible features, which is the Americans with Disabilities Act standard. 20% have at least one feature. Our response is that we have purchased five ADA swings that will be installed at parks. In addition, we are focusing on parks in specific districts we are hoping to improve, such as Buffalo Creek in District One and Palmasola in District Three. Our future recommendations are to enhance one park in Districts Two and Four as well. We did not include District Five because that is where our fully-inclusive Tom Bennett Playground is located.
It's because you're doing so good. Actually, Tom Bennett Park is actually in District Two. All right. It's right on the edge.
District Five was still left out. Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. I will fix that. The Adapt and Play Expo. It was brought to our attention by our bimonthly ADA focus group that many of our constituents do not have a good understanding of the different organizations and agencies that exist just to help them out. So in response, we created our Adapt and Play Expo. We have contacted over 60 different organizations throughout the county to participate, and so far, 24 have committed to the event. We will be holding displays, networking opportunities, community engagement, and also giveaways. We will be having pickleball, soccer, and what we are most excited for, wheelchair basketball. Why? We will have actual Paralympians there, which is very exciting. We are also going to have celebration arts troupe for the differently abled, and they will perform a choreographed dance. We will have Viscom Sign Language interpreters, Lighthouse Vision Loss Education Center, and the Wounded Warriors Ability Ranch. A full-time employee. So everything I have spoken about in this presentation would be the responsibility of a full-time recreational therapist that is unfunded. In addition to this, they will achieve one fully accessible playground in each district, introduce recreation programs aligned with community needs, establish an alliance with neighboring counties, build relationships with community partners to expand community involvement, and create a resource guide of internal and external adaptive programs and resources. Thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments on this one? See, so, see, no one. Yeah, thank you for putting this together. I think this is important. We've had a couple people come in and talk about it, and, you know, this government should be for everybody and not just for select people. My son plays, well, played, travel hockey, and we did a couple of these as his team as part of events they had. He actually played against a deaf team where there was stroblights instead of whistles, and they weren't allowed to talk on the ice the whole time because the other team couldn't. And we watched a blind hockey game where they used a big metal ball with bearings or something inside so they could hear it as they went. So it's, it's, it's great, the ingenuity to allow everyone to experience all the stuff that, that we experience on a regular basis and think nothing of it, but it takes people like yourself, people like staff that can put things together to make sure everyone can enjoy our parks and get outdoors and enjoy Manatee County. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys for listening and allowing this internship opportunity.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. Or, yeah, good morning. My name is Riva Gandhi. I'm a fourth-year student at the University of South Florida. This helps improve accessibility within our county, and through this community van, we'll be able to reach a broader amount of patients and meet them where they are. When picking locations for this mobile van, we have three considerations: accessibility, safety, and distance. The van must be accessible for our staff to get to, and must be safe for our staff to exit the vehicle and walk around to engage with patients. It also must be safe for our patients to attend, as they may be crossing busy boulevards or intersections. Finally, distance. It's hot in Florida. No patient is going to want to walk more than 30 minutes to reach this mobile vehicle and improve that accessibility within healthcare. All the locations chosen fit Manatee County's free bus system to improve accessibility and allow them to walk from the bus stop to the van itself. Within the van, we're going to be offering a variety of medical services, focusing specifically on primary care and preventative services, including blood pressure checks, glucose checks, and cholesterol screenings. We'll also be offering wound care and hygiene care. In addition to our medical services, we'll be offering a variety of social services, including food assistance and insurance benefits, setting our patients up with Medicaid, Medicare, or a third-party insurer. Additionally, we pride ourselves in our diversion services, reducing strain off of our current hospital systems by engaging with our patients and connecting them with current community resources. The Van Will Run Monday Through Friday, From 11 to 4. It'll be run by two community health employees, and will frequent around set locations with high EMS call volumes. These locations are seen here. A majority of our EMS call volume comes from the 34205 ZIP code, or Downtown Bradenton. However, if you look at this heat map, you see a very clear trend spreading southwards along Cortez Road, eastward along 64, and north into Palmetto and Ellington. Looking even closer, within this last fiscal year, we've had over 1,000 new patient referrals, with our leading services being general medical care at just under 30%, and caregiving services at just over 15%. Breaking this down, our medical care takes up about 40% of our total services, including filling prescriptions, general medical care, and substance abuse support. I would like to point out that our nurse practitioner filled 113 new prescriptions since October. Similarly, looking at our social services, it makes up about 50% of our total services, including caregiving, food assistance, health-supportive services, homeless population, and insurance benefits. I want to draw your attention to the red dots on this social services map. This makes up our homeless population calls. As our homeless populations age, they are 19 times more likely to call EMS or visit a hospital than our housed patients. This is because they lack accessible or preventative care measures to be able to receive services before their care becomes emergent. And while our patients are located all over the county, our services currently are located here, in downtown Bradenton, which is great if you live in downtown Bradenton. If you don't, you are forced to take the bus into downtown Bradenton, which provides challenges with time, distance, and so on. To help alleviate the strain off of our current system, I have proposed eight new locations, suggested by these orange dots on this map. These will be tried and tested by our community health workers throughout the county, and we will be able to expand the amount of services we offer. We also have two upcoming shelters set to open next year, and it will allow us to further alleviate strain off of our health systems. In addition to the mobile health van, I also propose connecting with the Mobile Health Map, which is a research project run by a collegiate university in the United States. This will allow us to track demographics for our patients and be able to target that research to specific patient populations throughout the county. Further, if our patients were to ever move away from Manatee County, we would be able to provide them with an application to find mobile services wherever they are, not just limited to where they currently live. Additionally, I propose joining the Mobile Healthcare Association. This initiative will allow us to partner and network with other like-minded organizations across the United States, and there are grant opportunities after one year of joining this Last year, it took a little bit under $1 million to run the community health program, and we diverted over $3 million from our health systems. We also had 2,000 new patient referrals and over 50 outreach events. With the implementation of this mobile health van, set to launch on September 2nd, we hope to make healthcare more accessible in Manatee County. Thank you so much.
Comments?
Mr. Chair, I've got a quick question.
Hold on, you've got to put yourself on the board.
Oh, I didn't know. I thought we were just, okay.
Intern, showing people how to work them.
I thought we were being very formal then.
But now you're third, so that's what you got. Commissioner Ballard.
Thank you for a great presentation. I do have a question. The app that you suggested, is that a free program that Manatee County can become a part of?
Yes, it is 100% free, and I've spoken to the organization, and they are very excited to potentially have us join. It basically will allow us to register and just track our demographics, so we'll be able to see, you know, the socioeconomic status of our patients, or, you know, what's their race, and maybe our care will differ based off of those results. So it's 100% free.
Awesome, yeah. I love getting good data, especially if it's free. Thank you.
All right, next on the board. One quick question. So I like the GIS presentation you put together. Is this going to be another layer in that hub that was talked about earlier? Just curious.
So this is static data, so it is only pulled from the last fiscal year, so since October. This number kind of changes based off of, you know, if there's a hurricane or a natural disaster, so this data would not be necessarily applicable. If Natalie would like the data, I would be happy to provide it to her, though.
Okay. How difficult was it? Do you think, how difficult would it be to keep it up-to-date, and how often would you recommend updating this?
I would recommend updating it on a six-month basis. It wasn't too difficult once I learned the system. I don't come from a GIS background, so it was interesting to learn it for the first time and then apply it in research.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ron, you're next.
Whoa, stereo. Thank you, Mr. Chairs. One quick question. MCR Health has their own mobile vehicles also. Is this going to work in conjunction with them, or stand alone outside of MCR Health, and be our own hit wagon, go wherever we need to go, be quick, reactive to those places we need to go, much like they go and park in areas like that? So...
So we currently offer services by appointment, so we'll be driving up to patient houses or patient locations and determining, you know, what do they need? And offering those preventative services, this will be separate from MCR Health in picking our own set locations, because we have a very different patient population. We work especially with homeless patients, and I think the biggest challenge we see with MCR Health is the inability to just walk up and speak to our patients without an appointment. So I think this will help alleviate that strain of, hey, you know, it's Monday, we're at this spot. If you need us, come find us here, in addition to going out in our Chevys and Tahos and meeting those patients with appointments.
Yeah, I think this is an awesome idea. Are you going to work in conjunction, especially on the homeless piece, with the sheriff's hot teams that go out and, you know, say, they'll say, hey, we need you guys to be over here, or whatever? So you'll be that reactive to where, if they're out, there's a group of homeless folks that need some medical attention, without calling EMS, they'll be able to call you guys, and you guys will be around with their basic medical needs. I mean, other than that, it goes to EMS, and they transport them, but...
Correct. So this vehicle itself will be static, so it'll be at set locations, set Monday through Friday, and then we'll have additional staff circling around, working with the sheriff's office and the other referrals we get.
All right. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Skylar Ramsey. I was one of the summer interns in Development Services Department. I was tasked over the summer with exploring how Manatee County's Land Development Code can better support alternative housing types. I'm going to start with why this exploration was necessary. Last year's hurricane season hit Manatee County hard. We had three hurricanes back-to-back, ranging in total property damage values of $50 million to $470 million. One of the heavily impacted communities was our mobile home communities. Many of these communities are located in special flood hazard areas, which are determined and regulated by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Because of that, they're also beholden to the FEMA 50% rule. And for those that aren't familiar, the FEMA 50% rule states that repairs are prohibited if they total over 50% of the market value of the structure, unless that structure is rebuilt to modern flood standards. One of those main flood standards is raising the home to base flood elevation. Seen here is an aerial of Paradise Bay Estates. This is off of Cortez Road. This is one of our mobile home communities. And if you squint really hard, you can see base flood elevations of 8 feet, 9 feet, and 11 feet. I want to get to cost of repair. How easy is it to get to that 50% rule? From our flood department's substantial damage assessment records from last year's hurricane season, we had roof repairs of over $5,000, AC change repairs of over $7,000. And what's not uncommon to find a mobile home valued at $10,000 or less, one of these repairs alone puts that structure at over 50%. Then they're required to raise their home to that 8, 9, 11 feet that we saw previously. I spoke to a representative from Jacobson Homes, one of our local mobile home manufacturers, about the cost of raising a home. We're looking at a minimum of $45,000, and that's if it's viable. Some of these communities, the homes are too closely knit together, so the necessary equipment can't get in to lift the home, or due to age or some other structural integrity issue, it won't survive the lift. Because of the FEMA 50% rule, other barriers to repair, some of these homes are effectively condemned after a rough hurricane. Residents have reached out to Manatee County staff to figure out how they can continue to live in these communities that they've set their roots in, that they want to continue to love and support. So we're here to propose some Land Development Code amendments to assist in that aim. First off, we want to allow recreational vehicles in mobile home parks, and require an approved evacuation plan. This mixed use of housing types is already present in our planned developments of mobile homes. However, this would be an expansion into our existing mobile home parks. Next up, we have new requirements for recreational vehicles for long-term stays, over 180 days. Many of these are already present in our code of ordinances, and they're all based on FEMA recommendations. So we'll list through these really quickly. We want to require them to be fully licensed, ready for highway use, self-propelled or accompanied by a tow and capable vehicle held on-site, attached to the site only by Quick disconnect type utilities, have no permanent attachments, and they shall evacuate in the declared state of emergency. With any Land Development Code update, you're going to run into other sections of the code, you're going to have unintended consequences. So one of those, we found, is our current definition of dwelling explicitly states that recreational vehicles are not considered dwellings, and that's in conflict with our main goal of allowing recreational vehicles as long-term residents. So we just have the addition of transient prior to recreational vehicle. Next up, we ran into this section here, temporary dwellings. We're suggesting a removal of it, as it has a lot of conflicting language in how we respond to disaster scenarios with recreational vehicles and mobile homes, and it's largely redundant when we consider post-disaster temporary dwellings. This is based on Florida statute, required to be compliant with it. The only addition here we have is adding a condition of fire to allow a temporary dwelling, because that would be lost in the previous section, and it's not present yet. This project can be summarized here in our positive, negative, and mitigating factors. Run through these really quickly. Our positive aspects: RVs are affordable, they're mobile, so they're evacuation-ready. It's an alternative housing type, they're faster to deploy than other standard housing types, and by providing another option to our residents, they assist in addressing our housing shortages. Negative aspects: In allowing recreational vehicles in our mobile home parks, there's a potential neighborhood character change. These areas of concern are flood-prone, and with our new long-term resident requirements, there's a potential burden of vehicle requirement cost. For mitigation, the property management of these mobile home communities, they can require separation of housing types as they see fit, if they're concerned with character change. And then we want to maintain evacuation readiness with our approved plan and our new RV requirements. And then finally, we're still maintaining our 180-day standards. Our new standards only come into play if you're going to be long-term, over 180 days. So I want to leave you with this. This main goal of allowing recreational vehicles in mobile home parks is supported by our comprehensive plan. I don't have time to show you each policy and each goal of a comprehensive plan that supports it, but the main ideas are this: We're supporting an alternative housing type, an affordable housing type, and a housing type and our standards now will effectively mitigate for hazards of these areas of concern, which are the essential elements of our comprehensive plan. And with that, thank you for your time and consideration, and what questions do you have?
Thank you so much. I think that this is a great project. Commissioner, myself, Commissioner Sadeek, and Commissioner Ron each have quite a few of these mobile home communities in our districts, and they really have been decimated. And, you know, I think all of us have been very concerned about some of our most vulnerable and elderly residents who have lived in these communities for years, and I think that opening up the standard a little bit more to allow for these recreational vehicles, I think, is potentially a really good option. I think it makes a lot of sense, so I'm excited to see this come forward. Thank you very much. I think this is a very worthwhile project, and I'd like to see our board adopt the changes that you proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sadeek.
I remember this coming up in the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting, and there was broad support for this idea. I think the only hang-up was over the 180-day limit, so I know we had that discussion with the rest of the committee members. Sounds like we kept it, so, well, we obviously kept it, so it sounds like some of the property owners preferred to keep that 180-day limit, or that was staff's recommendation, or yours?
In that conversation from Affordable Housing Committee and other conversations, if it's more viable to stay under 180 days for a resident, we'll maintain that instead of applying the standard for the circumstance that we're trying to. So we just didn't want to add a burden when it wasn't necessary.
Okay, got it. Other than that, what's the next step? Will staff bring this forward? Form a LBC amendment? Just curious.
Yeah, I believe we're scheduled for Planning Commission in October, and then however they determine, it'll come to you after that, yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work on this and staff support as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is great. I mean, I'm a big proponent of finding more housing opportunities for everybody, everywhere, of any kind, and I know we've had this current, Glenn's not here anymore. He's made similar arguments about the definition of transient recreational vehicles, whether or not wheels have to stay on there, whether or not they're mobile or not, you know, how they're strapped down, and there's lots of little nuances that just make things more difficult for people to find someplace to put a roof over their head. And you make some compelling arguments about, you know, especially about the mobile homes versus RV. I don't think people understand that 50% rule is a major problem, especially out on the island, on one particular mobile home park. You know, and being able just to effectively get in your vehicle and drive away in a storm is a lot better than leaving your mobile home, and a roof leaves, and all of a sudden you're putting it up 12 feet in the air. So this is great. This is, I think, a lot of support for the language when it comes in front of us in October for Planning Commission, and I'm guessing November for the Board of County Commissioners. So thank you very much for your efforts. I'm guessing this is, a lot of our presentations from interns, a lot of our internship projects do result in things. We've done a lot of stuff with libraries and other things in the past, but this seems like something that in near-term is going to result in actionable items from the board, and that's what we love to see. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yeah, be sure to include that on your resume when we pass it.
My name is Fabian Fodas. I'm in turn with Natural Resources. I make projects on stormwater awareness and improving water quality through environmental education. So stormwater is basically just the rainwater. That does not get absorbed into the ground after it rains, and you can usually see it just flowing down the side of the road, and it picks up a lot of pollution from different sources. It can be from chemicals, debris, pet waste, and so on. And once this water enters the stormwater network, it just goes straight to the bay. It's a big misconception that it goes to a water treatment plant, but it does not, so it gets very little treatment, if any, before it enters the waterways. So it's important to be aware of what's going down the drain. Some of the benefits of an outreach and education program, it's an accessible option to improve water quality, since it promotes best management practices across the population, and some of the goals of this program are to protect public... And once this water enters the stormwater network, it just goes straight to the bay. It's a big misconception that it goes to a water treatment plant, but it does not, so it gets very little treatment, if any, before it enters the waterways. So, it's important to be aware of what's going down the drain. Some of the benefits of an outreach and education program, it's an accessible option to improve water quality since it promotes best management practices across the population, and some of the goals of this program are to protect public health, the environment, and meet some of the requirements on the county's stormwater permit. So, in order to determine which areas would benefit the most from our outreach and education program, we designed this rubric to evaluate about 20 different bodies of water. And that's hard to look at, so to summarize, we looked at the impaired water status, which is basically the priority status given to the body of water by the State Department of Environmental Protection. The TMDL and BMAP status, that TMDL is basically the target for water quality, and the BMAP is the action plan to reach that percentage. And then the improvement potential looked at if the body of water was within an urbanized or rural part of the county, then the stakeholder potential was basically how many HOAs were within each area. Obviously, the more HOAs, the better, since we will be able to reach more people. And last but not least, we looked at the water quality improvement severity, which is the percentage by which the pollution in the body of water exceeded the allowed standard. So, after looking at our rubric, these are the eight bodies of water that got the highest score. Number one was Williams Creek, which is around Lakewood Ranch, and number two was Gap Creek, which is a little further west. And we also identified over 8,000 stormwater drains that discharge into these bodies of So, as far as implementation goes, we are doing some storm drain marking in communities within the areas shown in the previous slide. We did it with some volunteers, and we talked a little about stormwater and in our program. That's what it's going to look like. It's going to look a little different based on the type of storm drain that the community has. And I also made a guide with some informational resources, as well as a breakdown on how to do the storm drain marking. My project has been a lot about developing the framework, and I have foundation for this program going forward. It is a five-year program, so I think in the future, it will be beneficial for us to partner with the county's Communications Division to expand our reach, as well as partnering with organizations with similar goals, like Keep Manatee Beautiful. We have kind of gotten, already started with this, so we've been in contact with the START program. START stands for Solutions to Address Red Tide, which is a local pond management program that has around 26 communities around the county. So, we've been in contact with some of their communities. Feedback has been very positive so far. And also, updating from GS layers will be beneficial. We wanted to get an approximate count of how many storm drains were within the areas shown before, and we noticed that the county doesn't exactly have one GS layer that has all the storm drains. So, I kind of had to merge one from utilities and one from Public Works to get this approximate count for us to keep track. And we ran into a similar issue with the HOA lists. We noticed there were a few HOAs missing. For instance, I had to add mine, and my mentor added hers, so we are working on that as well. So, we have a more of a comprehensive spreadsheet with the HOAs, and we also have it divided by water basin to make outreach that much easier. Also, some additional resources will also be beneficial since all the funding and supplies for this program were provided by FDOT, District 1, since there are co-permittees on the county's stormwater permit. And last but not least, adding some business districts, as well as industrial parks, will also be beneficial since a lot of their work and products are likely to end up going down the drain. Thank you for your time.
Are there any questions? Seeing nobody on the board, okay. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. It was a great project.
As you can see, these are some very impressive young, new talent that is coming to our organization. These were just six projects of 24. I highly encourage you to take a look at, they were emailed to you last week. Please feel free to reach out to us, and we can connect you with any of these fantastic talent that is making a really big impact to us, to our mentors, to our departments. I mentioned earlier before that there were 21 hires in the county, and I'd like to mention a few names that are still active employees with us and contributing, and we'd like to think that this internship program is a part of that. So, again, thank you for your support. Blake, he is actually being rehired as of today. We're returning back to sports and leisure. Haley Harrison. Michaela Lindencamp. David Moorhead. Majah Apantska. Spencer Rosenstein. Olivia Sadi. Austin Seatman. Will Weiss. And right now, we are hiring Dahlia from this group. And I'd also like to just mention by name all of these fantastic interns that you did not get to hear from today, but really want to thank you all for a wonderful summer. Skylar. Jared. Gvarden. Kelsey. Natalie. Dania. Stephen. Fabian. Jay. Abby. Hudson. Alexia. Syriac. Macy. Mackenzie. Nick. Nicholas. Vanessa. Raleigh. Reva. Madison. James. Summer. And Ricardo. And I'd like to mention that Reva and Nicholas are both returning interns from last summer. So, we are making a big impact for them, just as much as they are for us. So, thank you again, and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you for spending the summer with us and giving us great insights into Manatee County. We appreciate all your time. Okay. At this time, we're going to open up citizen comments, continuation of future agenda items only. Are there any citizens' comments in the room? Okay. I've seen none on the board. I will close citizen comments. County attorney, do you have any comments?
Yes.
County administrator? No comments. Okay. Are there any commissioner comments at this time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'm on the board.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if there's no objection by 2/3 of the majority of the board, I'd like to make a motion to be considered and vote on an item which is not on today's agenda, specifically the Public Works item on Thursday, August 7th, Agenda Regarding the Update and Negotiations Regarding the Reimbursement Agreement for Legacy Boulevard Roundabout. Staff will be seeking direction from the board on how to proceed. I will not be able to attend this meeting, neither will the chair be able to attend this meeting, and I'm in the opinion that a full board should have the benefit of the presentation and an opportunity to debate and vote on the next steps. Therefore, if there's no objections by 2/3 of the majority of the board, I'm moving to direct the county attorney to remove the agenda item from August 7th meeting and instead place it on the next regularly scheduled board meeting after August 7th, which would be August 19th. That's my request, Mr. Chair.
It's part of commissioner comments, so that's why Commissioner Ron stated he needs a supermajority, 2/3's vote, effectively to even entertain it. So, before we have a motion on the floor, we need to have a motion made on entertaining the topic for inclusion in the agenda. So, Commissioner Ron, you would have to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion to include that in today's agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to add a discussion on the rescheduling of the roundabout by Commissioner Ron. I will second that for a discussion. We need a 2/3's majority vote to have this discussion. Commissioner Felts, you were on the board before you started speaking.
No, it's a completely different subject.
Okay, so I'll just leave you on the board so you don't lose your place.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments on Commissioner Ron's? Otherwise... Are you trying to put yourself on for comment?
Yeah.
If not, then...
I'll put my...
Okay, go ahead.
Carol's first.
She's on for commissioner comment.
I'm good with just leaving it as is. That's just my comment on that.
Okay, I'll put myself on just for discussion. First off, this motion is to add the discussion. So, now, what we're voting on is whether or not to allow Commissioner Ron to even have that discussion, unless so a vote on the topic of the discussion. So, the question is whether or not we're going to permit a commissioner to add a time-sensitive item, considering he can't add it in the future because the item will have already occurred at that point in time. So, that's this vote, and at this point, is just whether or not to even have this discussion.
No, I get that.
Okay.
That's my discussion, is that we should just leave it as is.
Okay. Commissioner Sadiq.
I'll support the discussion.
There are no other comments? Do I need to open up for public comment? This is just a procedural vote. This isn't a vote on a topic. Okay, I will not open it up for discussion, and you can cast your votes now. And that motion fails 4-2-3, requiring a supermajority with myself, Commissioner Ballard, Commissioner Sadiq, and Commissioner...
I said it wrong.
How did you do it wrong?
I said it wrong.
No, it says fail on my screen.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, it fails 4-3, requiring a supermajority, so that topic will not be up for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supermajority, my apologies. It required five votes and it received four votes. And just for the record, myself, Commissioner Ballard, Commissioner Sadiq, Commissioner Ron voted in favor of the discussion. Commissioners Felts, McCann, and Bearden voted no on entertaining the discussion. Is there anything else in your commissioner comments? Commissioner Ron?
No, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Felts, commissioner comment.
I just wanted to make mention, yesterday, our parish fire department got their new ladder truck, and it was a really good community celebration over there. It was, I was unable to be two places at once, but I did watch us all doing our 44th Street grand opening. The last segment of the 44th Street opening was very good, and so it was good to see things in both areas of the county. Really had a nice time with our fire truck out there. I think that our citizens in parish have a lot to be proud of with their fire station and their firemen out there, and being a district that is so large that we have four different fire districts servicing it, it was good to see one growing, and I appreciated being there. Thank you.
Seems like there's inefficiencies in that. Before I continue on with commissioner comments, because they started before I was able to get back over here, we do open up public comment.
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. I was in the back staff room. Okay, perfect. Commissioner Sadiq, our commissioner comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick announcement. I have a town hall on August 13th, 6:30 to 8:00, at GT Ray Rec Center, so come on by and bring some popcorn. The other thing is, I just wanted to thank all the interns for your projects, or a few that, at least, if you worked on the library one, stick around. I wanted to ask you a question or two, the dashboard. But other than that, I just wanted to thank you all for the hard work there. I didn't get to ask any questions for the first one, but as a lot of people know, one of the things that always infuriates me is the gap, or gaps in our sidewalk network. And you raised attention to the ramps, which I hadn't really paid as much attention to. So, thank you for that, and I hope that we can, at least, my next CIP meeting with Chad, I'll talk to him about what we can do to import some of these projects, at least from my district, and they're pretty cheap. You could probably fund all of these for 44th Avenue money, but jokes aside, I appreciate the hard work there and with some of the other projects that we didn't get to speak to today. So, just because we didn't ask questions doesn't mean we didn't appreciate the hard work. I've been asking for sidewalk gap inventories for a while, so I appreciate you all helping with that, and I think we will take a lot of action on these, with these projects. Just wanted to thank you all personally.
Thank you, and well said. Commissioner McCann, commissioner comment.
No comment.
Commissioner Ballard.
No comment.
Commissioner Bearden.
No comment.
Charlie Pym, any comments?
No.
What's that? All right, and I have nothing, so if there's nothing further, we are adjourned.
Good job. (applause)[1529.01]